Attention, the meeting will start in five minutes. Once again, the meeting will start in five minutes. One minute, we will start in one minute. Thirty seconds.
Good evening, thank you for attending the November 4th meeting of the School Board of Alachua County. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now I would like to recognize Ms. Diana Rollo with our performers for this evening.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Patton, and District Administrators. I'd like to begin by recognizing our incredible art teachers and their talented students whose work is featured in the boardroom this month. From Talbot Elementary on Boards 1 and 4, we have students from Talbot, art teacher is Katie Jopling. From Terwilliger Elementary School, art teacher Jennifer Protano on Boards 2 and 3 in the back. And behind me on Boards 5 and 6, we have artwork from Foster Elementary, Melissa Montilla is the art teacher there. Thank you, art teachers, for sharing your students' colorful and vibrant artwork with us this month. This past Saturday, our high school bands performed at District Marching MPA at Santa Fe High School. And I'm pleased to share that Santa Fe, Newberry, Gainesville, and Buaholtz High Schools all received straight superior ratings, and Eastside High School earned an overall excellent rating. Congratulations to all of our band directors and their hard-working students. Tonight, we are delighted to welcome members of the Canapaha Middle School Band, under the direction of Mike Lofredo, please raise your hand, Mike, and Summer Atterbury, please raise your hand. Thank you also to Principal Sherry Estes, who's here with us, for her continued support of your students and your teachers at Canapaha. The Canapaha Middle School Band is currently the fastest-growing program in our district with more than 300 students enrolled in band classes. They consistently earn superior ratings under Mr. Lofredo and Ms. Atterbury's leadership, and this year, they have a record six students selected for all-state ensembles, an incredible accomplishment. In honor of Veterans Day, they will be performing two selections for us this evening. The clarinet ensemble will play "American Patrol," and the saxophone ensemble will perform "Under the Double Eagle." Please join me in welcoming the Canapaha Middle School Band.
Hello, my name is Clara Rodriguez, and today we'll be playing "American Patrol," arranged by Andrew Valenz.
My name is Avery Jonas, and today the saxophone quintet will be playing "Under the Double Eagle" by J.F. Wagner, and arranged by David Lawrie.
Thank you so much to the Canapaha Middle School Band, under the direction of Summer Attenbury and Michael Lofredo. And I want to take a moment to congratulate you both on how this program has grown. I think I speak for all of us when I say that it is truly incredible what you've accomplished in a few short years. On behalf of the School Board and Superintendent, we thank you, and the students, and all of your families, and the administration of Canapaha Middle School, including Ms. Estes, who is here, for your support of music in our schools, and that was phenomenal. Thank you so much. Dr. McNeely.
Are we gonna take a photo? First of all, are we taking a photo tonight? You've already had one? Okay, very good. I wanted to say to all of the instrumentalists who did the clarinet, one of my favorites, that's what I did in high school and middle school, didn't get past chair three, and you know what that means. But I enjoyed it, and tonight, you just made my heart beam. Thank you so very much.
And now Ms. Rollo has our Friends of the Elementary Arts presentation.
Yes, thank you so much. We have a special presentation from the Friends of Elementary Arts. This local organization has been a fierce supporter of all things elementary art and music since their founding year back in 2008. That's what I thought, I had that written here, I wanted to make sure I got the year right. They have donated thousands of dollars to ensure that our students have access to experiences like performances at the Phillips Center, trips to the Harn Museum of Art, and most recently, we've added marching band performances at our elementary schools. Their donations have impacted thousands of students over the last 15 or so years, and I'm extremely grateful for this partnership. Please welcome Ms. Cheryl Poe, who is a former elementary music teacher herself, to give us a special presentation.
Thank you, Diana. And thank you to the Canapaha students, parents, and teachers. This evening was an absolute wonderful time for us to be able to be here and share with you and with all of us the importance of arts and music, dance, from the foundation, elementary, babyhood, through junior high and high school. It is with a great pleasure and humility that I say to you, as Diana did, we formed this nonprofit, loosely grouped, organization in 2008 because there were extreme budget cuts in the school board budget. And our neighbors, our community members said, whoa, we need elementary arts in our schools. And the superintendent at the time, sort of off the cuff, said, well, if you can raise $850,000 in six weeks, we could put those elementary arts programs back whole. Well, we didn't quite make that goal, but we did earn $850,000. No, $85,000, erase, $85,000, $85,000 in six weeks. After we did that, we didn't know how to raise money, we did, and the Community Foundation of North Central Florida helped us set up a fund so that we were legal. And the following year, we donated $50,000 to the elementary schools so that they could put their art and music programs whole. Since that time, since 2008, we have donated and continue to donate big checks. Tonight, it'll be $5,000 that will go into the Elementary Art and Music Fund so that they continue their field trips and their live experiences. We are grateful to all of you, we are grateful to our community. We continue, as you know, I'm more than retired, I'm double-retired, but I continue to work as our board members continue to work for the good of our community. Diane's mentioned a lot of the things that we do, and we have something coming up in February, that's our Elementary Student Art and Mentor Art Gala. It will be at the Gainesville Fine Arts Association, stay tuned. Thank you very much for all that you do, parents, teachers, students, kids. We are happy to present our big check, $5,000, this evening.
Thank you so much to the Friends of the Elementary Arts for their continued support of our arts programs with our youngest students. And now, Mr. Schelnet has our Principal of the Year presentation.
Good evening, Chair Rockwell, members of the board, Superintendent Patton. It's a tough act to follow, there's fantastic students and wonderful volunteers in our community, but we've got two amazing administrators who are equally worth celebrating, just like those two different groups. Alachua County Public Schools is so fortunate to have so many outstanding school-based administrators who do an amazing job every day to support our school communities. Our principals and assistant principals overcome so many challenges to provide both a safe and positive learning and working environment for our students and employees. October is National School Principals Month, and Alachua County Public Schools continues to participate in the Florida Department of Education State Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year recognition programs. What I think makes these awards truly special is that they are totally nominated and voted on directly by their peers. So all the principals nominated the members, and only the principals voted, so both of the two representatives, the principal and assistant principal of the year, we're recognizing tonight, have definitely earned the respect of their colleagues, which I think makes it even that much more special. So I'm going to read now the name of the Principal of the Year and ask that individual to stay seated just for a second while I read a bio, and I'm sure he'll be uncomfortable because he's always about everyone else and not himself. But the Alachua County Principal of the Year from Littlewood Elementary School is Mr. Justin Russell. A brief bio about him, Mr. Russell moved to Gainesville to attend the University of Florida in 2003. Upon graduation from UF, he accepted a job teaching 6th grade science at Canapaha Middle School in 2007. He spent a total of 10 years at Canapaha, serving as a science teacher, science department chair, dean of students, assistant principal of administration, and assistant principal of curriculum. During his 10 years at Canapaha, he returned to UF to earn his master's degree in educational leadership. In 2017, he was appointed principal at Littlewood Elementary School, where he has proudly served ever since. One thing that Mr. Russell won't say, in his very first year being principal at Littlewood, the school increased its letter grade from a C to a B, and he would be the first to take zero credit for it and credit his students and faculty and staff. But this past year, in which Littlewood and their community celebrated a grade of an A, they spent the entire year in the transition school dealing with all of those new activities, which I think makes that even a more special situation and honor for him. So at this point, I would ask for Mr. Russell to stand up and move to the front so he can get a plaque from Dr. Patton and pose for a photo, and let's give him a huge round of applause as he does so. Madam Chair, our district's Assistant Principal of the Year, just like Mr. Russell, I think embodies what it is to be a servant leader. Again, I'm gonna ask her to remain seated just for a minute as I read her bio, but we're very, very plowed to recognize Ms. Heather Lowry, Assistant Principal at Glen Springs Elementary School, as the Alachua County Public Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. Ms. Lowry is serving in her first year at Glen Springs, but prior to joining Glen Springs, she served for two years as Assistant Principal at Hidden Oak Elementary. She brings a strong foundation of education with 12 years of classroom teaching experience and five years as a behavior resource teacher. She's also somehow, despite all of this, nearing completion of her coursework for her doctorate in educational leadership, and will begin her dissertation this spring. So soon-to-be Dr. Lowry, it wants everyone to know that she's a proud graduate of Buaholtz High School, and she attended both Lincoln and Fort Clark, and so that makes leadership and service in Alachua County Public Schools even more meaningful to her. Eleven years ago, she and her husband Levi returned to Gainesville to raise their two children, Addison and Keegan. Ms. Lowry is absolutely a relational leader with student-first mindset, deeply committed to fostering meaningful connections and cultivating a positive school culture where every student, every faculty, and every staff member and parent can thrive. She's not gonna like it, 'cause she's always behind the scenes promoting everyone else, but Ms. Lowry, if you would, please, move to the front so you can accept your plaque from Dr. Patton and pose for a picture of the board, and let's give her a big round of applause.
Congratulations again, Mr. Russell and Ms. Lowry, those honors are very well-deserved, and on behalf of the Superintendent and board, we appreciate everything you do every day for our students and what all of our school-based administrators do. And now, Dr. Patton has some district highlights for us.
Thank you, and so tonight, we have some district highlights for everyone to see, and then also, we actually will be showcasing our magnet showcase. So we just had that event recently, so we wanna thank all the teachers, our kids that just represented our school so well, our administrators there, but mostly our parents that brought their students out to come and explore options here in Alachua County Public Schools. So with that, etan, thank you. So with that, Etan, thank you. We're so proud of the benefits of the magnet programs for kids to get to experience things firsthand, take many, many field trips, learn about their potential careers, build networks from community members right here, letting them see and experience firsthand, not just think, but experience it. The range of programs from STEM to fine arts to world languages, health sciences, and career pathways, our magnet and choice programs help our kids explore their passions and prepare them for their future success.
They are wonderful programs. They offer students the opportunity to earn certifications. They can earn college credits with Santa Fe College. They can do internships. They get an opportunity to interact with people from the industry and really set themselves on a really good path for their future for whatever career choice they would like to do.
I'm actually from the Gainesville area, so there were some magnets I already knew a little bit about, but it seems like there's a lot more opportunity than there was when I came up through the high school system here. And so it was, it's been good to learn a lot more, especially some of the newer ones.
There's a lot of really helpful people and they'll explain it in detail to you. And then there's a lot of the poster boards that really show the hands-on stuff. So it's really interesting. It's really helping clarify a lot of the magnet stuff.
It's been very helpful because he can get a realistic idea of what to expect and what is actually offered as opposed to just reading it on a paper.
Alachua County has so many options, so every student can fit. And so there's always something for you. And that's why we love having all these magnets, because you want your student to have that really great educational experience. You can get that in Alachua County.
There's so many paths, looking back, that I could have taken as a freshman. And I'm so glad that I chose this program because if I hadn't, I wouldn't have known of all these amazing opportunities. And I wouldn't have developed the leadership skills that I have through this program. So without it, I would be on a completely different track. And I'm so thankful because this program has changed my life for the better.
I must say, I'm a very proud and satisfied parent of two children, one in high school, one in middle school. And I think it's very beneficial for their growth and for their advancement. I think it's a very progressive kind of education that it's very important everyone should try doing in magnet program enrollment.
Of course, I'm going to make the pitch from my vein at what makes us unique, but I don't have a problem telling anybody that you can't go wrong in Alachua County with the variety of magnet programs we have here. There's something for everyone and it's up to them to make the best of it. But the choices are phenomenal and fantastic teachers, great educators across the board, whatever school you go to.
The main thing I want parents and prospective students to know is just how passionate we are as teachers to get these kids ready for the workforce, whether it be through hands-on learning with my program with the biotech, doing hands-on skills, learning hands-on skills with science, or mainly just learning about our industry certifications that we offer. We offer a very large variety of those as well.
It's more than just like going to school. You actually have something that's in school, but kind of more than the basic education. And it helps kids decide if they really want that certain career or leads them into different things they want, they might want to do in their life. Unlike our ag program here, if a kid comes in and they're not sure about the ag industry or if they even want to be in ag, they can get involved and really test it out. And if they do, they can stay in it. That might lead them somewhere big in their life that they're going to do after high school.
Honestly, for me, there's both programs here. And so for me, I just kind of explain my story and what I have been able to accomplish through this program. And then from there, I hope that they'll be inspired by that and want to join as well.
Yeah, and you also get to meet new people who have the same interests as you. So that's always nice. You get to build like the friendships and you get to learn about what you really love.
Really, whatever you're interested in, it's a really good way to go deep into whatever you want to study in the future. And GHS in particular gives you the opportunity to broaden your perspective through research and also through various extracurriculars like sports and other clubs.
And what we try to do at Eastside is just try to establish what that student's purpose is and try to pour into it. And also just understanding that we have the best programs in our county, in my opinion, for them to be successful.
It's been incredibly invaluable for our students that get to see again and meet students that are from these programs, for parents to get to hear. And they have said person after person how it is our students that are selling these programs to them because they can see themselves there as a student. We also have incredible teachers, but they're even stepping behind to let the kids talk about the performance. But it's also great to hear some community members that are here that don't even have kids, just keep hearing about our magnets. So here they are to see firsthand about what happens in Alachua County Public Schools. So just as we close out this section, we'd like to just take one extra minute and to recognize again our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. So Mr. Russell, would you like to just say a few words as we close this section out? Thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you so much for the kind words, Mr. Shellnut. And thank you for supporting me through my entire career. And I also like to thank the Board for spending the time to recognize us tonight. It was a great honor to be here. Dr. Patton, Dr. Atria, thank you. And the whole district-based team for supporting the school-based administrators. Anytime we need anything, we know you're right there alongside us to support and entrusting me to do this work at Littlewood over the last nine years. It's been an honor. And as Mr. Shellnut said, the award recognition was voted on by my colleagues, the fellow principals. And so I want to say thank you to that group as well. And any one of our principals would have been a great representative for our Alachua County Public Schools. But thank you. And the format this year, since Dr. Patton's come for our principal meetings, has allowed us to meet as a large group. So we meet elementary, middle, and high all together. So that has allowed us to form relationships with all of the principals at all the levels and collaborate. So I've sincerely appreciated that. But I also, of course, have to thank the Littlewood community, our teachers and staff and families and students. I certainly look at this recognition as a team, a team recognition for all the great work that we're doing together and the great work that we've done over the last nine school years. Because our teachers and staff are so good at their job, it makes my job a whole lot easier. So I want to say thank you to, thank you to everybody and thanks for letting me say a few words. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Heather, to bring home this section, thank you. Congratulations again to both.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, Dr. Atria, Board members. Thank you very much. I am honored and humbled with this award for sure. I want to thank my family that's in the room, my parents, my mom and dad, my aunt, my mom and my aunt are both retired educators, my sister and my brother-in-law. Online, my husband, he's in Minnesota this week for work. Our daughter is a junior at UF, so she is working this evening. And my son is a freshman FSU. And I'm not supposed to say that out loud, but he is also watching online. So their support has been invaluable. And they have sacrificed their mom a lot of times to love other kids and other families. And so I appreciate that from them. I also want to thank Ms. Thompson and Ms. Saylor, who are also in the room. They are incredible leaders who are relational and who have poured into me and have modeled what good leadership looks like. And so I'm very appreciative to the relationship that I have with both of them. I also want to thank the communities of Glen Springs and Hidden Oak. They have both loved me well and cared for me well. They have been very easy to lead and I am grateful for that. I also have to give a shout out for really all of the schools that I've been a part of because I think that shapes who you are. You take a little bit of that with you. And so I'm very grateful for every opportunity that I've had to serve. And last, but definitely not least, I want to thank my cohort of assistant principals. They are some of the most dedicated, hardworking, and selfless people in our district. And they are knowledgeable and they share, like Mr. Russell said, we've had the opportunity to work together and collaborate in some great ways this year, and I am grateful for them. And I'm honored to represent them this evening. So thank you.
Thank you all. Again, congratulations representing everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, and thank you to our communications team for that presentation. Now we are going to recess our regular board meeting to move into our public hearing. And I'm going to recognize Ms. Terry, who's coming up to the podium. We have a public hearing on amendments to Board Policy 8407, Safe School Officers.
Good evening. Tonight, we are here with a public hearing for Policy 8407, Safe Schools Officer. The first reading was on October 7th at that board meeting. So this policy is changing or is revising because of specific requirements for training of school security guards be conducted by the Sheriff's Office, that the School Board of Alachua County is not using school guardians in the traditional schools, but charter schools may choose to use school guardians. FDLE, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, is reporting requirements are also included in this revision.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Ms. Johnson, do we have any members of the public?
No, Madam Chair.
Are there any comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none. We will see this policy again for a second read.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. And now, our public hearing is adjourned and we are going back into our regular meeting. Mr. Delaney, please share our public comment statement.
Yes, ma'am. During the School Board of Alachua County's business meetings, reasonable decorum is required during all portions of the meeting. Conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting is not allowed. Any individual or individuals causing disruption or interference will be asked to stop. Failure to comply may result in removal from the meeting. The School Board encourages speakers to focus on issues and constructive input. The School Board impartially receives all public comments. Comments that are obscene, abusive, or threatening are not allowed. Thank you for supporting a respectful environment where all voices can be heard. For additional information, the School Board's policy regarding public comment is available on the Alachua County Schools website.
At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to address the Board. Please begin by stating your name for the record. We ask that speakers maintain respect and decorum so that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. Please refrain from applause, outbursts, or calling out during public comment so that the meeting may proceed in an orderly manner. Thank you for your cooperation and we will begin with non-agenda items. Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, our first three speakers on non-agenda items are Jamie Levitt, Lisa Blake, and Gina Rivera. Please come to the podium.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Levitt and I'm a proud parent of a fifth grader and a third grader at Talbot Elementary. I'm here tonight because I am heartbroken and deeply concerned about the removal and public defamation of one of our most beloved teachers, someone who has done nothing but show kindness, compassion, and dedication to our children. This teacher has worked closely with both of my children for the past two years. The claim that they force students to use their pronouns is simply untrue. I have heard my own children use them incorrectly and it was never even mentioned. For my kids, this teacher's gender identity has never mattered. When I asked them to describe their teacher, and this is in their own words, they said they are kind, funny, loving, gentle, generous, and lovely. Not one word was said about gender, only about heart. Gender, like autism, exists on a spectrum, a continuum that celebrates individuality and human diversity. My third grader, who's actually with, here with me tonight, is on the autism spectrum. He depends on structure and trust in his educators. Since this teacher's removal, he has been without consistent ESE support. His comfort, his learning, and his confidence have all been shaken. Our district's motto said, "We are dedicated to the success of every child." But how can we live up to that if we remove teachers who embody that very mission? I am asking you, as a parent, a 20-year community member, and as someone who believes in fairness and inclusion, to please reinstate this teacher. Let them return to the classroom where they continue to make every child feel seen, valued, and loved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Lisa Blake and I am the parent of a student at Talbot Elementary. I'm here tonight to speak in full support of the teacher who has been incredible, an incredible welcoming presence in this community. This teacher has gone above and beyond to make every student feel valued and safe, exactly what we want in our classrooms. I am deeply disappointed and frankly disgusted that instead of focusing on ways to support our educators, such as providing updated and appropriate curriculum-supporting materials, sufficient classroom resources, and ensuring that every child has access to free, healthy meals, our state government has chosen to fixate on a minor political issue and turn it into a spectacle. In addition, the State Attorney General and Governor publicly named our children's elementary school in a social media post. That was not leadership. That was reckless and self, a self-serving PR stunt. By doing so, they used our children as pawns to score political points in the news cycle. Those posts put our children in danger and at risk for political violence. Within our hour, within hours, the school's online presence started getting harassing troll-like comments and pictures were taken and used in a national media outlet as clickbait. As a parent, this is completely unacceptable. To broadcast the location of our young students simply as a political attack is not just unprofessional and reckless, but also disruptive and puts our children at risk for retaliation and violence. I am asking this Board to publicly stand firmly with our teachers, our students, and our community to make it clear that political interference and public targeting of our schools will not be tolerated. Protect our educators and protect our students. Demand that our state leaders do their jobs by investing in education, not attacking it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to speak very fast, so I apologize. My name is Gina Rivera. I am a teacher at Talbot Elementary and a parent of a Talbot student. I am here to speak in defense of a fellow coworker and friend who has been falsely accused of forcing staff and students to call them by their preferred name and pronouns. The Attorney General stated two main reasons for this individual to stop using MX. First, he stated that it was apropos to biological nonsense. I would like to inform the Attorney General that according to the widely respected Scientific American Journal, biologists now think that there is a larger spectrum than just binary female and male. This was written in 2018, seven years ago. The attorney's claim that this is not scientifically accepted is simply wrong. The second reason for his demand to stop this teacher from using MX is that MX is simply a work of fiction. A simple internet search would have informed the Attorney General that in 2015, the Oxford English Dictionary, which is the principal historical dictionary of the English language, included the use of MX as a recognized term. The claim by the Attorney General that MX is a fictitious appellation is simply wrong. This individual works directly in my classroom every single day. Not only are they a phenomenal educator, they are a special education professional. They'll serve my classroom and my ESE support facilitator for half of my reading block every single day. We work closely together to ensure our students are getting their educational needs met. The students are always incredibly happy to see them in our classroom and often even complain when they have to go to go to their next assigned class. I want to be incredibly clear, at no point ever has this individual asked a student to call them by a particular moniker or pronoun. Even when children have used their non-preferred pronouns, the teacher has never corrected them or asked them to change it. The claims made by the Attorney General based on apparent accusation are demonstrably false. Furthermore, the Attorney General demonstrates an incredible amount of ignorance towards the difference of sexuality and gender. He states, "Allowing teachers to co-op students into the project of gratifying their personal fetishes and fantasies directly disregards parents' fundamental rights in directing the upbringing of their children." The Attorney General would benefit from knowing that gender and sexuality are not the same thing. The Attorney General is the one sexualizing this teacher by defaming their name and falsely claiming what they have never actually done in the classroom.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next three speakers are Jane McNulty, Rebecca Reagan, and Elizabeth Husband. Please come to the podium.
I am here to support our superintendent, Dr. Patton, and her willingness to stay on another year. Her expertise was honed in the fourth-largest school system in the country, Miami-Dade County Public Schools, as Region 6 Director, larger than Alachua County Public Schools, and then a superintendent of Collier County Public Schools. Coming from the outside, she has been able to lead through what is best for the district and not through granting favors, cronyism, and playing favorites, as has been done in the past. She came into this position to help right the ship. Under her leadership, she made the necessary tough decisions and prevented a $20 million deficit for the opening of this school year. Instead, it has enabled the district to provide raises. The number of SI schools has dropped to three, and the faculty and staff attrition is down this year from the same time last year. The data speaks for itself. Right now, Alachua County School Board and Public Schools is not in a position to recruit the best candidate available. With Dr. Patton's willingness to stay another year, there will be plenty of time to start the RFP process, to hire a search firm, and to find the best possible fit for Alachua County Public Schools, and have enough time for a smooth transition process. I am grateful for her willingness to continue to lead us through these difficult days and give us time we need to search the right way. Thank you, Dr. Patton.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Elizabeth Husband, and I wanted to thank Dr. Patton for her leadership. I sincerely hope she stays for another year and continues her work on the academic and financial problems in the district. Thanks to Dr. Patton, the superintendent's job will look more attractive to the candidates who interview for the permanent position. And please, continue to support Mrs. Surtin as she faces the State Board of Education. She will appear before the State Board on November 13th, where she will have to defend her First Amendment rights, and she needs our support. If you can't be there in person, email or write the Education Commissioner and board members. It is beyond hypocritical that state officials are trying to persecute our school board members for exercising their First Amendment rights while making a hero out of a parent who is alleged to have been censored for his public insults directed at some of our board members. And please, spare me the pearl clutching from our state officials who remain silent when State Representative Randy Fine celebrates the sound of vehicle tires making, makes when running over demonstrators. This political theater is a distraction from the serious issues facing us, like achievement gaps, teacher pay, financial shortfalls, and our need to find a new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Reagan. I teach at Gainesville High School. However, what I'm about to say do not reflect my school site. They do, however, reflect my morals and guiding philosophy as an educator. It's been almost nine months since we received the memo regarding law enforcement, interactions with students, without any updates. When you become a teacher, beginning teacher advice stresses clear procedures in the classroom. Clear expectations for students are optimal. So, why is the same expectation not held to the district? While I appreciate the efforts to amend things like magma math and room slash throw share, which were not ready at the start of pre-planning, expectations for school staff versus the district seem to be different. There's already a massive teacher shortage, so on top of initiatives and programs, teachers were expected to learn in a very short amount of time. The district expects those same dedicated teachers to roll over and relent when it comes to student safety, excuse me. If we're dedicated to the success of every student, shouldn't that include safety? At bare minimum, we need a policy that ensures validating identification and warrants. Things are only going to get worse, so what are we waiting for? I personally, as a teacher, offer help before and after school. I offer snacks, hygiene products. I post videos of me going over test reviews on Canvas. I care about my students, and I show up for them. How's the district showing up for students? I know, I know that the board, you also care about students, and you're dedicated to student success and safety, but please let your actions reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next three speakers are Taylor Gilfillan, Lindsey Buekelman, and Warren Goldstein. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Board member, superintendent. Taylor Gilfillan, community member and DAC member, once we get it going. It's November 4th. Our students have their IEP set and their growth goals. Our teachers have their timelines for their evaluations and appraisals, as do our principals, as do our support staffs, as do our district administrators. I think the only person right now that doesn't have a clear plan and evaluation set for them is our superintendent. I think it's always a good day to set clear goals for people in really important roles, whether they are a BRT or a superintendent. I think this board has the opportunity to break a really negative cycle in this district. For at least the last two superintendents, a superintendent evaluation has been synonymous with superintendent termination. I think this board has the opportunity to set a standard where the norm for evaluations is anchored in growth and continuous improvement and not punishment. The evaluations aren't just for superintendents as well. They are also for the board. So, Board Policy 1040, which I know you're very familiar with, outlines the policy for how we evaluate the superintendent. There are three components. One is the superintendent and being able to meet their goals. The second part is the board's effectiveness of working together. And the third is the board's effectiveness in being able to set clear direction for the superintendent. So, again, my reason for bringing this up is not superintendent preparation. It is let us set a precedent for the superintendent that comes from this national search, that when we say evaluation, we are talking about growth and continuous improvement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Lindsey Buekelman, and I am the pastor at University Lutheran Church here in Gainesville. I am here tonight to speak in support of strengthening our district's, district's guidance on how immigration enforcement is carried out in our schools. As a pastor and a Christian, my faith teaches me that every human being is created in the image of God with inherent dignity and worth. Scripture calls us to protect the vulnerable as if we were caring for Jesus Himself. That calling extends to the care of children, every one of them. Allowing warrantless detentions sends the message that some children are less deserving of safety and belonging. It is our moral duty to protect all students equally. In my ordination vows, I made a promise, to speak truth to power and to stand up for justice in the world. I expect the same moral courage from our school leaders. That's why this update matters, requiring that agents identify themselves, present a signed judicial warrant for a specific child, and allow the district's legal counsel to review that warrant. These are simple, responsible measures. They protect students, they protect staff, and they uphold the trust that families place in our schools. A policy requiring law enforcement to present judicial warrants is not only legally sound, it is an act of moral leadership. By ensuring clear protections, our schools will be places of peace and trust where every child can learn without fear. Thank you for your leadership and for standing up for our children.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Warren Goldstein. I taught U.S. history at the college level for about 30 years. As everyone in this room knows, schools are sacred places, where children come to learn, to be fed, to be cared for, to be inspired, and to be loved by their teachers, not to be afraid. I repeat, not to be afraid. Throughout this country, teachers and administrators are following the law and insisting that in order to enter their buildings to talk to students, law enforcement officers of all kinds, including our new paramilitary forces, ICE agents, must identify themselves and produce signed judicial warrants. But not in Alachua County, where this district allows persons claiming to be ICE officers to interrogate and remove students without providing identification, without a signed judicial warrant, and without notifying the student's parent or legal guardian. Just let those words sink in for a minute. The superintendent has prepared the ground to allow our community's schoolchildren to be sold down the deportation river. How is this possible? Now more than ever, we need our leaders to step up to the moral plate not to facilitate child snatching by an increasingly lawless, paramilitary force. Eventually, this rising tide of authoritarianism is going to recede. And when it does, how do you want to be remembered, Superintendent Patton and your fellow members of the school board, as someone who took her responsibilities to children in this community to heart, or as one who offered children up to masked men who don't even have to show identification? This policy of yours has an easy fix. Lots of the folks who are going to speak tonight have really simple things you can change. Please just do it.
Thank you for your comments. No applause, please.
Our next three speakers are Fran Ricardo, Donna Shaper, and Anne Katerba. Please come to the podium.
Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Fran Ricardo, and I'm a former educator at Alachua County. In fact, I was one of the first, first ones at Fort Clark Middle School, so give them a shout-out. I'm here because I'm concerned about your policy. From what I understand, is that ICE can come onto your campus, interview students without notifying their parents, and without a judicial warrant. And I was really concerned about this, so I did a little research, and I'm going to share documents with you from other school boards, superintendents, and legal firms. But I'd like to read this to you from one of the lawyers. It says, "ICE agents cannot seize or detain students in a classroom without a valid warrant. Otherwise, ICE agents would be violating the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Certainly, an ICE agent may enter the public portions of a school building without a warrant. However, a mere entry into the school building is not subject to the same constitutional scrutiny as seizing, arresting, detaining, or otherwise removing registered enactment. The statute does not change this or other circumvent the applicability of the Fourth Amendment in these circumstances." So, I just hope that, as board members, you reflect on what is our purpose here? What is our purpose with our students? Not for, to traumatize them, not for them to be scared, but to educate them, to fascinate them, and to inspire them. So, thank you very much, and I'll share these documents with you.
Thank you for your comments, and if you can bring the documents to Ms. Johnson, she'll get them to us. Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Donna Scopper from the United Church of Gainesville, let us pray. In the name of Almighty God, known by so many different names, none of which is absolutely right, draw near. In the name of Allah, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus Christ, in the name of all that is good and true and beautiful, in the name of energy and force, and even in the name of those of us who do not believe or know how to believe, make sure our children are safe. This is not a political issue, it is a moral issue. Make sure they are safe, in their own schools. Pray with me, please. I don't want to make this against a superintendent or against a president. I know what God wants. God wants safety for our children, and they cannot be safe if masked men are coming into their schools and taking away their friends or taking themselves away. In the name of Almighty God, do the right thing. Amen.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Anne Katerba. Good evening, board chair, board members, Superintendent Patton. I need to back up, maybe? I have always had this opinion, but I wanted to come here tonight and say that I am in favor of extending Dr. Patton's contract. Like I said, that's not always been my position, but I do feel that there are many advantages to her staying on. She's highly respected superintendent, both statewide and nationally. She's had many years of administrative experience from Miami-Dade, and is the superintendent in Collier County, both high-performing districts, and have enjoyed a good working relationship with the Florida Department of Education, which some people may not see as an advantage. I do, because Alachua County's had a target on its back for a long time. And maybe that can help a little bit, that she can at least talk to some of these folks. We've not had a superintendent for a long time that has actual superintendent experience before they became a superintendent here. And that has been a problem because they have been a work in progress. Some have been more successful than others. And so thus, Dr. Patton, I think maybe even she was surprised that she's had quite a lot of things to do to clean up, and that process is still ongoing. I think we are lucky to have her willing, her willing to stay on, as she's bringing in fresh perspectives that are needed. We seem to think we know best a lot of times, and sometimes we do really great things, but in reality and data show us that we've lagged many other districts in the state in important areas with large disparities stubbornly persisting for many years, particularly in terms of the performance of black students, students with disabilities. For these students, these, the, the status quo is not okay. Extend.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next three speakers are Holden McNeil, Chelsea Wilson, and Dr. Kim Hampton. Please come to the podium.
My name is Holden McNeil. I'm a sophomore from Gainesville High School, and I'm here to speak about the current guidance that has come from the school board to the administration at schools across Alachua County. As we all know, ICE has been illegally entering and kidnapping students from communities and schools across the nation. And it is the job of the school board to use specific guidance in order to prevent this from happening to our schools. All of our students must be protected. That has to happen from the administration and teachers, and that guidance must be provided from you. With the current guidance that has been given, ICE has the ability to walk through the front door of any school and take whatever students they please. We all know that they are not using the typical process, and without a warrant and proof of identification, we have no idea who they're after or if they're actually even an ICE agent. And I'd like to also share that the threat of ICE in schools is deeply affecting students. And it's, it's not that students are afraid at school, it's that they won't come to school. Because if they are at risk while they're at school, then they will not come. I've heard about parents refusing to send their students to school because they're afraid that on the way there or while even in a classroom, they are, they will be taken. And I'd like everyone on the board and everyone in here to imagine that someone in your workplace was taken while you're at work because of their skin color or their linguistic ability. And the repeated refusal to change the guidance, not policy, but only guidance, given to administration, is putting every student at this risk. is putting every student at this risk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Wilson. I am a 30-year Alachua County resident, homeowner, and proud graduate of Alachua County Public Schools. I was deeply disturbed by the sentiments expressed by Florida Attorney General James Outhmeyer in his letter to the school board of Alachua County. I consider this letter an extreme overreach of the state government, as well as an infringement on my rights and religious freedoms as a parent of three students in Alachua County Schools, two of which attend Talbot Elementary. I've spoken with my children and other Talbot parents, and none have received reports that the teacher insisted corrected or otherwise forced students, parents, or colleagues to use their chosen pronouns in honorific, as alleged in Outhmeyer's letter. Validating and respecting another's beliefs, tolerance of differences, and freedom of expression are among my core values and beliefs. Removing this teacher from their position sends a clear message that evangelical nationalist beliefs are protected at the expense of all others, and directly undermines the religious beliefs and practices that I wish to instill in my children. The statutes cited by Outhmeyer are unconstitutional, and I urge the school board and all other parties to challenge it in any way possible. I request that this teacher is reinstated immediately, and that they continue to be permitted to express their gender identity in exactly the manner they have been thus far. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Superintendent Patton and Board Members. My name is Dr. Kim Hampton. I'm a teacher in my 35th year of teaching, 28th year here in Alachua County. Let me begin by saying first how proud we are at Glen Springs to have Heather Lowery selected as the AP of the Year. It's very deserved. She's part of a dynamic duo of an admin team who has worked through some adversities this school year already. Now to my topic. I was unable to attend the last board meeting to make a comment, but I'm here now to echo the concern shared in Gina Rivera's letter to the board. Thank you, Gina. It's a message that spoke from so many of us in the district. Teachers are carrying more of a load than ever, and it's taking a toll on both our energy and our ability to give students our best. There's even one thing that Gina's letter left out, and that's that new parent communication app. And I'm seriously off my parent communication game this year, trying to reach families and use this app. While everything's well-intentioned, it's one more platform to learn, manage, and monitor on top of Magma Math, Focus Boards, AMIRA, ICE Station, extra trainings, and the collaborative planning that take up one of my planning periods per week. I can acknowledge that some of these initiatives have value, but rolling them out all together has created an unsustainable workload this year, and at some point, we must ask, are these things truly helping our students learn or just burning teachers out? I'm asking district and school leaders to show some courage, the courage to admit when they've made a mistake and not followed best practice, and to roll back what's not serving teachers or students. Real leadership means being willing to say, we tried this, but it's not really helping the people closest to children. In the recent news, I saw that the Oklahoma's new state superintendent said something that just impacted me. If you're not face-to-face with students every day, then you are support staff for
Our next three speakers are Tina Days, Malika Green, and Jansey Vincent. Please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Tina Days, and I just want to say, I think the state is worrying about different things. The teacher that actually called the little child a monkey since she was old and getting no reprimand and getting nothing, she ain't been brought up to the board. So how is that not creating a safe standard for the parent? The parent was upset about that, and she is suing the school, which I hope she wins, and she got my cousin to represent her. The second thing is, I'm here for the app. I don't know about why some teachers say it's too hard, but for me as a parent, I love it. My daughter's teacher was able to understand it, and she's sending pictures every single day telling what she does at Duval, so I am a big fan of the new app. I can directly contact my daughter's teacher, and she contacted me with no problem. The third, with the buses. I'm here about the buses. Every single day, I get a text saying buses are up to 90 minutes late. So now it's even got to the point today, not only were they late, they just flat-out said they just had a shortage of bus drivers, and it affected my daughter. Because she calling me saying that I may have to pick her up. What are we doing about the buses? Is it the funding? Is it not hiring enough bus drivers? And not only that, it's safety. Again, another bus driver about a month ago, a bus driver go through a road about to drop off my daughter to my daycare provider. She sideswiped the truck mirror and knocked the mirror off with my daughter on the bus. Now, from what I understand, my daycare provider says she speeds up the road. Now, is it because she trying to speed because there are not enough drivers? It's a safe condition, and then the bus driver gonna slide and say my daughter was not on the bus? Yes, she was on the bus. My daycare provider FaceTimed me, and I had to go see about my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening to the Chair and the Board Members. My name is Jansey Vincent. I'm here as a voice to those that can't be here or can't speak out. First of all, my first concern is the public comment policy. Last month ago, I was trying to speak on behalf of a lot of comments and concerns that was brought to me, and I found myself couldn't being able to speak, because the policy says you gotta be here, sign up by before 6 o'clock for the board meeting, so I was unable to speak. You know, I believe truly in the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and I think that I hope the board revisit, because sometimes people can't be here before 6 o'clock in order to sign up or whatever, and I like to be in person. A lot of people live in Hawthorne, Newbury, High Springs, and that's a far distance to get here. So I would like for you, if you can, revisit. I'm not sure why the change was made, but really, look at that. Second, my concern is lack of resources for all schools. You know, there's nothing wrong in, you know, being short here and there, but when you're short all the time, you have substitute teachers. That's a concern to me, especially for stabilization for kids. You know, it's great to hire, you know, substitute teachers, but you need permanent teachers, too. When it comes to staff morale, you know, one of the things I was coming to talk about is, you know, teachers had a hard time getting pay raises and stuff. And then I was told that it was a letter came out saying exceptional teachers get $15,000 bonus if they go to a failing school. Where that money came from? You know, how that feel when who's exceptional? And, you know, teachers against each other? You gotta, you know, really think about that. I think everybody should be exceptional. Teachers, they work very hard, they work with behavior kids, they do so much, and I think everybody should be exceptional. When it comes down to bus transportation, that's another one. Bus 2120 is always late, running late for the morning and afternoon, and I live in rural areas. A lot of parents...
Thank you for your comments.
Is Malika Green in the room? We'll move on to our next three speakers, Pamela Marshall Coons, Maria Shipe, and Crystal
...for human trafficking and sex trafficking. To hear that masked people who don't have to identify themselves are allowed in our schools to take our babies away is greatly, greatly disturbing to me, and it should be to you as well. I rise tonight deeply concerned, not just about potential school closings, which are an issue, but about what this conversation reveals about the heart of our school system. When teachers are anxious about their future, when classrooms become places of uncertainty instead of stability, morale plummets, and learning suffers. How can our students feel inspired if their teachers do not feel valued? How can parents feel secure sending their children to schools where teachers fear for their own security and livelihood? Leadership at its core is not about managing buildings. It's about building trust. It's about creating an environment where teachers feel respected, where their voices matter, and where every decision reflects care for the human beings inside the walls, not just the numbers on the spreadsheets. Great schools are built for great teachers, and great teachers stay where they feel seen, supported, and safe. We cannot strengthen our students' outcomes by weakening teacher morale. We cannot talk about student achievement without first ensuring teachers' well-being. To close a school is a bad decision, but to lose the spirit of those who teach there is a far greater crime for our community, our workforce, our students, and our parents.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent. My name is Mariah Shipe, and I'm an elementary teacher here in the district. I am here tonight not only on behalf of myself, but for my colleagues, and most importantly, our students. The beginning of this school year has been one of the most challenging and chaotic I have experienced thus far. Teachers are doing our very best to implement several major district changes all at once in structural empowerment, a new math curriculum, new literacy expectations, and new communication platform, while still maintaining everything we were already responsible for. We are teaching core instruction, providing interventions, completing PMPs, attending collaborative planning meetings, completing and turning in lesson plans, meetings and meetings, and so much more. We are doing it because we deeply care. But the reality is, many of us are working beyond our contracted hours just to stay afloat. Teachers are tired, overwhelmed, and yes, feeling underappreciated. Another challenge we face is inconsistency, and structural empowerment is happening in some schools, but not in others. Expectations look different across the district. The lack of clarity and consistency makes it difficult for teachers to know what is expected and for teachers to receive equitable support. We have also seen key instruction tools removed without clear communication, like BrainPop. This is a resource that builds background knowledge and vocabulary engagement. At this time, we all know research shows that students are struggling to read. We should be focusing more on that. With that as a focus, we need to remember that we should be looking at our youngest learners in kindergarten through second grade. We need to support that matches the expectations that are placed on us. We would like support with implementing these practices that have been put in place. People getting into the classroom and providing support to the teachers. What do you want to see? How do you expect it to happen? Not just build the plane as it is being built.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Dr. Crystal Testman, ACEA Instructional Vice President and Service Unit Director and Chief Negotiator for Education Support Professional Unit. I did have one topic to speak about right now, but I would like to also echo the importance of honoring the federal protections for gender identity and due process that have been discussed by so many people before me, and to also echo the ask that you honor the input and needs of your teachers, because so many of them are drowning. But on a more positive note, Education Support Professional Appreciation Day is November 19th this year. And we really do appreciate our education support professionals. Thank you to all of our ESPs for everything you do each day to keep our district running smoothly and our students well taken care of. ACEA will be celebrating again by giving each of our ESP members a token of our appreciation, sponsored in part by Sonic and Wawa. We are also running a special for ESPs who sign up for the union this month. If they type ESP into the recruiter field of the Fast Track form, they get their first dues free. All educators are underappreciated at so many times, and our education support professionals definitely feel that intensely. So please thank an education support professional this month for all that they do.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, that is the last of the speakers on non-agenda items.
We will begin comments on agenda items now.
Our first three speakers are Jansey Vincent, Gina Rivera, and Taylor Gilfillan.
Again, good evening. I want to speak on 2B, employing our personnel. And the reason is, I think it's very important that we hire and retain employees that will stay in the district and not leave. As you heard, teachers have more on their plate than ever. Also, your non-certified staff, it concerns me when you take away the delta entry vacation. I understand their vacation time was taken away. These are your lawyer-bike bomb, multi-task employees. They need to be compensated in order to stay in the district. Also, when it comes down to taking jobs, you know, it's important, again, to staff your school properly in order to succeed. In a school, gotta be properly staffed, and that's with the right people, and make sure that it's decent paid. Also, it's important that nurses and permanent, like I say, permanent teachers instead of permanent substitute teachers, you know. I'm not sure it says a budget crisis or whatever it is, but again, the students need stable teachers and personnel in their life in order to recognize and also just be a part of the learning process, and thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I got 4D. 4D, my last one is with the superintendent. The superintendent, I understand, wanted to stay for six months, and there are some board members that ran on the issue that they was going to do a national search, and I think it's inappropriate to do that. You know, there's nothing wrong, you know, in moving ahead and doing the right thing for the right reasons. And, you know, if she, you know, there's nothing wrong in looking for a national search and making sure that our education system continues to do process.
Hello, my name is Gina Rivera. Once again, I want to thank my fellow educators who stood up and mentioned the amount of workload that we have this year. This goes along with what I wanted to talk about within the nationwide search for a superintendent. With the, I know that our district is not perfect. We have a lot of things that we have to work on, and getting someone to come represent us and guide us through these things that we need to overcome is incredibly important. I know it is very difficult to do, and I can appreciate how monumental of a task that is. However, to use this buckshot approach of we are going to start a million things at the same time and see which one of these things will actually help, was actually just piling on on top of us to the point that people are quitting, people are having panic attacks that simulate heart attacks and ending up at an ER because of it, people in tears because they cannot even take a mental health day because of how hard it is to actually be absent. With the teacher that I talked about before that has been placed on leave in my classroom, I feel like I can't be absent, because I'm not giving my kids two days alike, two substitutes in one day. So I have to be there to be their stability. We have neurodivergent children in our classrooms, in every classroom, that are counting on us, they need disability. If we are drowning, the children will drown. So I cannot save somebody. You're supposed to put the mask on yourself before you put the mask on someone else in an airplane. Right now, I need you to put my mask on, because I am drowning and I can't breathe. I sent that email to you guys for the last board meeting, because I couldn't be here, that email that you had mentioned before, because I was asking for help. And I put some things on that letter that we could have easily implemented by now to kind of help us out. None of those things have gone forward. I hope that when we vote to ratify our contract, those meeting minutes do go down, and we do have some restructuring to give us a breather, because we are to the point that we want to do our jobs effectively, but you are physically making it impossible. And as additional thing, out of the 13 weeks of school, nine of those weekends, I have worked at school to keep up.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you, Ms. Vincent. I didn't thank you for your comments, so.
Madam Chair, before I begin, I have two items that I just roll through both. Okay, great. Taylor Gilfillan. So first, consolidation. I guess consolidation is the new rezoning. It sounds like a word change, but still the same effect of what we talked about. I think this is important. We can't talk about continuing to fund teacher raises and the impact we have on students without operating more efficiently. So I just, I don't see a way forward in the budget crunch where we don't do this. So I think it's good that we're starting it. Some questions I have is just what's going to be different from 2023? There were three key struggles, I think, from my perspective that I saw when we were rolling through the rezoning process, both when I was the former district staff member, as the Director of Data Analytics Evaluation and Accountability, and also as a community member on the other side of it. The first is just clarity on how community input affects changes that are made. Do you need the community's opinion or their agreement when it comes to how we finalize our maps? I think being crystal clear with us this year for how we go through on our process is going is going to make it a better one. Second, I think we struggled internally with having clear and accurate data. This is a very narrow timeline. I'm just thinking ahead of how are we proactively making sure that we don't slow down the process and that we work together well with the vendor to not push back our timelines? And three, and finally, I think we struggled, I said we, the board, I think I saw struggled to effectively communicate consensus and set direction for the superintendent about what to prioritize. So be thinking, I think, as a board during this process, how you'll work together to really be clear when the decisions need to get made and getting the daddy you need to make those decisions. I think, yeah, I think ultimately, a vendor won't make decisions, data won't make decisions, this board will make decisions. What should be true and what do you need to be set up for success, and how will that be a part of this process? That's my two minutes for the first one, switching to my next two minutes.
It's two minutes total.
It's per item.
Oh, is it per item? Oh, thank you, sorry. I apologize, my mistake.
Okay, I reclaim my four seconds. Superintendent search. Great, this is happening, I think, for a few reasons. One, I just genuinely, I think it's a sign of goodwill that we have a superintendent who is wanting to patch the torch and wanting to set up a latwa for a smooth transition. I want to name just a mindset that I hear when we start talking about superintendent search. I hear the phrase come up a lot, the statement of who would want to come here? Who would want to come to Alachua County? And I want to name that I think this is a disempowering mindset, it's a disenfranchising mindset. I think it does not serve kids. I think it limits the opportunity for growth based on the assumptions of a few, and I think most importantly, it disempowers the courageous leaders who are wanting to step up and tackle challenges head-on. So as we go into this process, I know we have our challenges, I know we talk about them a lot. Let's not let that stop us from wanting to invite courageous leaders to the seat and follow in Dr. Patton's footsteps of the work she's been doing. Last thing I'll say is just thinking about what our North Star with this search process is. Is our North Star with this to get another superintendent? Or is our North Star here to really set up our district for the first smooth leadership transition that we've had in years? To set our district up and our teachers and our students up for success? So just as we're thinking about this, I know that the focus will be on the person, the seat, the role, but let's really do be thinking about how we create this smooth transition where it is not just one person after another, but this person really feels empowered to take the reins and really take our direction for our district to even higher heights. So that's my word, thank you. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you for your comments. Before the next speaker goes up, this is a relatively new public comment policy, and there seems to be, I was confused, so if I'm confused, I'm sure our community members are confused. Mr. Delaney, can you clarify how this works for agenda items and perhaps add that clarification to future explanations of our public comment? And also, if there was anyone who had comments on more than one agenda item and only got two minutes and needs more time, please see Ms. Johnson.
The clock was reset for anyone who were that.
Okay.
So when we get to items that are on the agenda, it's two minutes per agenda item, and the consent agenda acts as a single two-minute time period. So if you have multiple items on the consent agenda, you get two minutes for that. Otherwise, you get two minutes per action item. So if you have two action items and five things on the consent agenda, you get six minutes. Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delaney. Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, our next three speakers are Tina Days, Evelyn Fox, and Nkonda Ja. Please come to the podium.
My name is Tina Days, so let me get this straight. We want a new superintendent. We need to do zoning. We don't have no funding, apparently, because we can't even build the stadium. And we also got the governor, the state secretary, state of education, looking at our meetings every time we have a meeting, and he get on Facebook to the point where I have people say, what's going on with Alachua County? All of that. And on addition, we got two school board members up for reelection next year. Three, two, and we got one, three. But we also want a superintendent to come with all of this going on. Now, I love Alachua County, but we have to be honest, it's the point of who really want to deal with all of that? We already stressing, we got the government shutdown, and people want to uproot people's families to deal with all this tackling, whereas if we look at our previous superintendent that don't stay long, we get a new crop of people, they vote them out, we go back over again. That's not being negative, that's being realistic. Who wants to deal with all of that? Like, come on, and if we do get someone to come, is it because we willing to take them? Because they don't have nowhere else to go? Like, really serious? Like, y'all don't understand how this stress people out, like, and to get with the bussin'. That deals with that too, because people talk. We need to get our stuff in order. I know, Ms. Pat, you don't want to stay, I understand that, but we don't have our house in order to invite people that really want to come. You know, if I was a superintendent looking for a job, and I see we growing, we got the stuff tackled, we don't even have a strategic plan, what are strategic plan? We don't have none of that, but y'all expect people to come here? Y'all not being realistic.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. I'm Evelyn Fox, and I'm with the Alachua County Branch of the NAACP, and I do have some of my executive board members here with us this evening. I said, we sent you a letter yesterday with our concerns about the superintendent search. Last week, I looked on your webpage, and there was something different from what you all have on it tonight. One item was stricken from the agenda, which I'm glad that you did. But after hearing these teachers come up here tonight, we have no other choice but to move forward, to get a strong courageous leader to take us forward. Things aren't getting any better, the teachers are stressed, and with everything going on with our district, the children is rarely being mentioned. All the chaos has been about the Facebook page and the this, and it's not been about our children, and they are the most important thing that we have. And that's what it should be all about. So I'm hoping that this board will move forward tonight with a search for a new superintendent, a strong courageous person, as he just said, that could lead us. And I think we, there are people out there who would come here and lead this district. Everybody isn't weak. There are some good candidates out there, and I think we don't need to wait any longer. We urge you to please move forward with the search. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Nkonda Ja, and I've been working with youth in this community for more than 40 years. Just in the last year, we have worked with more than 400 students in this district. I come before you this evening to ask you to move forward with a search for a superintendent. I've watched this school board hire a person with no experience as a superintendent to using someone temporarily from another county. While you experiment, our student and teachers need to become, needs become greater, their needs become greater. It's not going to be easy to get someone with a proven track record of addressing problems similar to those in our district. But the longer you put off searching, the worse our school district gets. Our teachers deserve leadership that helps them address the educational needs of their students, even without the resources they need. We hope a new superintendent, a permanent superintendent, will be able to help them find needed resources. We hope a new superintendent will help address our teacher shortage that many times substitutes are mere babysitters. I ask you not just for the students and teachers, but for their support staff, and definitely for our bus drivers, one of the hardest jobs out here. This community stands ready to help you make that step towards searching for a superintendent. We're willing to make.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, our final three speakers are Michael Perkins, Mike Powell, and Crystal Testman. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent. I just feel privileged to be at this point, and I don't have much to say because it's all been said, two things, time waits for no one. There's nothing to be gained by not making this national search go forward ASAP. Without vision, people perish. It's all these teachers and other people who've spoken already, we're perishing. We need a leader that were going to give us a vision and a path forward. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Mike Powell, NAACP, NDA9. I'm here just to simply take a few seconds, and you can pass the remaining time to someone else. I'm here to simply ask that our board members keep their promise. Similar to the Gator football team, we have a very talented district, a team that deserves to find and be led by the very best leadership available. Next, public comment policy should be revisited to be fair to every citizen that comes here. Lastly, the NAACP around the state stands with those unfairly persecuted and attacked by others from the outside. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm Crystal Testman again. I'm hopeful that the board will ratify the tentative agreements regarding salary and working conditions that ACEA has come to with the district that has already passed in a landslide last week when education support professionals and instructional staff voted. The 3% raise and improved working conditions tentatively agreed to are something we are very proud of and are the results of ACEA members bringing forth what is important to them and a lot of hard work. I'd like to thank my ESP collective bargaining team, as well as our president Carmen Ward and her instructional bargaining team. I would also like to recognize Deborah Terry, Chief Negotiator for the district team, for contributing to the most collaborative, professional, and efficient bargaining I have been on in the 10-plus years that I've been involved in the ACEA bargaining team. Thank you to her team as well, and thank you to everyone in the payroll department working very hard to try to get those raises and that retro pay in paychecks before Thanksgiving.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes our public comment segment. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that are requested prior? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vu. Is there any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the approval of the regular school board meeting minutes from October 7th, 2025, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from October 7th, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vu, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sirdan, is there any discussion or comment on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to approval of the school board workshop minutes for October 15th, 2025, is there a motion to approve those workshop minutes?
Some moved.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vu, is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda, Dr. Patton.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move the staff recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vu, is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our action items, our first action item is amendments to the instructional and ESP bargaining amendments and the proposed 25-26 salary schedule. I'll give Ms. Terry a moment to come to the podium.
And as Mrs. Terry is coming to the podium, I also would like to just extend our thanks to both teams of the, Crystal and Carmen, both groups and their teams they brought to the board, and Mrs. Terry and our team that came to the board. I believe it was just very appreciative that everybody came with the mindset of let's try and get this done and get the raises into people's pockets here before the holidays. I want to just personally thank all that were involved. I want to thank our teachers for their getting ratified in that one day. She'll go through a little bit more of the details, but it is a record for us that we took 13 months last year and did not get it ratified, and in five sessions, and in five weeks, we were able to get this done today. So that's the good work of everyone working together. We're blessed to have a county that worked together on this, so thank you to everyone, including each group, that also ratified this. So with that, Debbie Terry.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for giving me the authority to negotiate on your behalf. The team and I sincerely appreciate the board's efforts in considering the needs of all Alachua County Public School employees. Your leadership is pivotal in fostering a positive and productive work environment for everyone involved in our education system. We would also like to extend thanks to Carmen Ward and Dr. Crystal Testman and the union members for their relentless dedication. Their tireless work in bringing together various stakeholders exemplifies the commitment in doing what is best for our employees and ultimately our students. Another special recognition goes out to the members of the union and the district negotiation teams who have devoted their personal time and energy to collaborate after hours. Their willingness to go above and beyond is a testament to the passion and dedication we all share for our profession and for the betterment of Alachua County Public Schools. Once again, we are pleased to stand together as a unified body demonstrating that when we collaborate, we can achieve meaningful outcomes. The collective efforts of all involved have resulted in a comprehensive plan that reflects our shared commitment to excellence in education and support for our employees. On September 4th, we started our meetings with ground rules, and then over the next five weeks, we were able to have tentative agreements on salary for both teams and language for both teams. The ratification vote was on October 29th. To me, it was a major landslide. There were 2,085 that voted yes and 26 noes. So with all of that being said, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement language and salaries for ACEA, both the instructional and educational support professionals, along with the salaries for professional and technical and administrative as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve those salary schedules and collective bargaining agreements?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second? Second by Dr. McNeely. Are there any comments or discussion from the board, Ms. Sirdan? Are there any comments or discussion from the board, Ms. Sirdan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Terry, Dr. Patton, to my colleagues. I know this was a little bit different. We entered into this negotiation a little bit different place from where we did for 24-25. Started the, had to deal with at the end of last school year, a deficit of about $20 million in our budget, a lot of compounding factors, and the decision and leadership shown by Dr. Patton in coming in and having such a Herculean lift and having to make hard decisions of contracting staff and reducing costs in order to free up funding to balance the budget, close out one year. But then to position us to have funding with, to be able to provide raises for this current year is, was no easy task. And I think she probably hated to see my number come up because I had a whole lot of questions in the financial realm because of the, where we were last school year. Very unpopular decisions, and they were hurtful because it did entail reducing staff. But in the face of not being able to have it all, we had to position ourselves that way. We got fewer dollars from the state this year for the teacher salary allocation increase. I think it's about half, if I'm recalling correctly, from what we got in last school year. So that that amount of money that we got specifically from raises from the state is, was significantly less, as it was for all districts in the state, not just our county. But the funds that are here and that we were able to provide this year really is, in light of decline in enrollment, is nothing short of remarkable. So I'm glad that we're here. I'm glad to see the space. We didn't meet the, get the deadline, the September 30 deadline, but we are way closer than what we were in last school year. So thanks for your hard work. Thanks to ACEA and their leadership team for working, you are working collaboratively together to get us to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sirdan. Mr. Vu.
Yeah, echoing a lot of the comments Ms. Sirdan said too, and I just do want to thank Ms. Terry again too, not just for the union negotiations, but just your general, just job, just leading HR. As somebody who's been an employee in this, or who was an employee in this district, you know, back in the 2010s too, I've never seen this level of positivity reactions from not just the union, but our staff when it comes to our human resources departments. So just, I just, thank you so much. You really have kind of made things more streamlined. We're following statutes like we're supposed to, and we're valuing people like we're supposed to. And I just hope we do more and more of that. So just, thank you so much. I just thank you too to Dr. Patton, so much of making sure that we can give our staff raises that they deserve, is making sure we budget for them. And even in the face of the state clawing back millions from districts all over the state, declining enrollment, and then only getting an increase of per student funding under 1% this year, we were still able to put $6.4 million towards staff raises. And so to me, that just shows that if it's something we, it's important, we prioritize it, we make it something that we can just do every year because we build it into our budget. And so I just, again, I'm very appreciative of that. I think the vote shows that our staff accepted it too. Especially after a historic rejection, you know, of a negotiation just months ago. So I'm just really appreciative to everybody involved, and I really hope this is something that we can start doing consistently, that we continue to make the decisions we need to, to make operations more efficient, that we save on overhead so that we can give our teachers, again, staff, the money they deserve and put more money to the classrooms for our students too. So I think we are on the right track on a lot of these things, and I just, I'm really appreciative of that, and I've heard a lot of good feedback from, you know, people I know who got to vote on this already. That again, it's a night and day difference that we're doing something now, that we're finished now, that they're getting their money now, and that it is significant, and we're not just holding it off for months and months and months. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vu. Do you have anything?
Thank you, Ms. Terry. I know you worked really hard, and I really appreciate it. And you represented us well, and I'm so happy we turned it over to you. Thank you.
Dr. McNeely, thank you, Ms. Playback.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. And Ms. Terry, thank you again, and to the members that represent on the other side because you had to work together to get to this point. And I'm hoping that we will continue to be unified with this process, as well as for next year, that we will have even more to divvy out for our non-instructional as well as instructional. They are most deserving all of the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, and I just want to echo what everyone has said. I want to thank Dr. Patton for leading us through making the hard decisions to right-size our budget. During the budgeting process a year ago, I sat at a workshop and said, where have we set any money aside for raises? And there wasn't any. And this year, I did not have to ask that question because I knew that that money had been reserved, and I knew that our budget had been righted. And a huge thank you, she's not here this evening, but to Ms. Marte and to the entire finance team for that. I also want to thank Ms. Terry and our bargaining team for your hard work, and our ACA partners, Ms. Ward and Dr. Testman and their bargaining teams. Dr. Testman already said it, but this is the smoothest bargaining I have experienced since joining the board, and I am just so thankful to both our bargaining team and ACA's bargaining team, and to Dr. Patton and our finance team for making this possible. Thank you all so much. And with that done, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to proposed amendments to Board Policy 9271, PEP students. Ms. Neal.
Good evening. I snuck over here already. Good evening. This evening, I'm presenting Policy 9271 for a first reading. This proposed policy outlines how the Personal Education Program, or PEP, and Family Empowerment Scholarship Unique Abilities, or FESUA, students may access district programs, courses, and activities. While implementation is optional under state law, several Florida districts have already adopted similar policies or established comparable procedures. PEP and FESUA students are those whose instruction is parent-directed and who are registered with an eligible scholarship funding organization. Opportunities under this policy include participation in interscholastic extracurricular activities, access to district virtual instruction programs, enrollment in career and technical education courses, industry certifications, and state or national assessments. For exceptional student education, parents who believe their child may have a disability or giftedness may request an evaluation through the district's ESE office or through Fidlers. It's important to note that PEP and Family Empowerment Scholarship students are not entitled to the free and appropriate public education or FATE unless they enroll in the district. Course participation and fees for PEP and FESUA students are done differently as those students may contract with the district to take individual courses on a space-available basis. Full-time district students have placement priority, and class size requirements will be observed. Because these students do not generate FTE funding, parents cover the full cost of participation through education savings accounts, or ESAs. Payment would be made quarterly and is nonrefundable. A proposed cost structure was shared at the board workshop on October 15, 2025, but we are still developing a final version of this, as well as the application for course consideration and the parent-student contract that will be utilized upon implementation. In summary, Policy 2271 is designed to balance student access, parental responsibility, and compliance with Florida law. It ensures that PEP and FESUA students can participate in meaningful district opportunities while clearly defining expectations for funding, enrollment, and accountability. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the adoption of Policy 9271 as presented for advertising and schedule a second reading on December 16, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Is there a motion to approve this policy for advertising?
I move we go with staff recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Vu, is there a second? Second by Ms. Playback. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Vu.
I made my thoughts known at the workshop we had on this. I do think it's a good idea. Again, it's just something that we don't get to choose the landscape we're in. We have to navigate the landscape we're in as best we can, and to me, adopting this policy does do that. And again, it gives students more opportunities, not just in our schools, but also greater experiences in our schools. And with, the hope is that experience comes a greater enrollment, and maybe we can entice students not just to take more classes with us, but to maybe come back full-time to be our students. So yes, you know, I will be voting yes.
Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my colleague, Mr. Vu, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get where you are to say that we can't. I agree, we don't choose the landscape. I'm just not sure about the navigation of it. You know, from the workshop, I do want to reiterate that I think that the cost of the program should, should be at a premium. It shouldn't be, we shouldn't sell what we have to offer at face value. So right now, I'm not sure where I stand on it, but I just, I'm not for breaking it apart because I just don't think that we should be trying to present it as if we can, we're providing on a one-class basis, because that's just not how education is.
Ms. Playback.
I do agree with this policy, but I disagree with Ms. Sirdan that I, I don't think it should be a premium. I think it should be competitive, what is around the state. I think we should get, and I don't know, Ms. Neal, if you're going to bring anything back on the second reading regarding that, but I don't think we're here to make money on PEP. I think we, we need to offer this to these kids, and they, they need to have this and they have that opportunity, but I don't think we should be making money on this and charging a premium. I think it should be what is done across the state, and that's how I feel about that. Thank you.
Did you have a response?
I was just going to say, we are still working on that fee structure, and so I believe that we could bring that back at that December 16. As part of the second reading, the policy is going to be different than the actual procedures with the fee structure, et cetera, but we should be able to share that in the coming weeks as well.
Let me just be real clear. There is no across the state.
Yeah.
Every district's doing it different, charging different. They have some that's high, some that's just medium, some that's straight across. So if you're looking for us to bring back what's done across the state, you're not going to get an answer.
And, oh, go ahead.
Or what?
Or an idea of what people are charging.
Yes, ma'am, we can share-
Yeah, we can do all the research to show you that.
Got some examples we can share.
Okay, Mr. Vu, you're recognized.
So sorry. Yeah, but ultimately, that would be operational, so I don't think it's needed for us to like present at the meeting and vote. You know, it might be information that's great to have for us as board members, just to see in direction, but I don't think it's something that needs to be presented as part of the policy in the second reading. Okay.
So Ms. Playback, you're in agreement that it could be provided to you at your one-on-one?
Yeah.
Okay, because I also agree with that, that this is procedural, operational, not part of the board meeting, but we would love to, when you finalize that, see that information. I also, I concur with my colleague, Ms. Playback, that we shouldn't be charging a premium. I think students in PEP program have the option to take their money anywhere, and if they choose to take courses with us, we should charge what that course costs. And my, you know, our policy, this policy says that it'll be based on FTE and any additional fees that are associated with the class. And, you know, the PEP scholarship itself is based on FTE. So if a middle school or high school student is taking one class, that would be a sixth, if it's a full-year class, a sixth of their scholarship amount would be the FTE for that. And I don't, you know, I agree with this policy. I think that in, in our, we've existed in an environment of school choice. Public education is very different from what it was when I was a student and when I started teaching. Charter schools were a relatively new thing when I started teaching, and there were, there were no scholarships like there are now. So school choice is the, the reality that we are existing in, and our students do have a lot of choices. And if we have a student who's on the PEP scholarship and is willing to come back for one class, one class could become two classes, and two classes could become them coming back. And even if it remains that one class, I'd rather have them come to us for that one class than go to Santa Fe College, or Outschool, or a private tutor. You know, I'd, I'd rather them come to us. So I also support this policy. Did anyone else have anything to add? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ms. Sirdan is in dissent. Motion carries for one. Moving on to action item three, approval of Jay Brown Professional Group contract for consolidation, and that is Ms. Neal again.
Thank you so much. Alachua County Public Schools is launching a district-wide consolidation and rezoning effort to address shifts in enrollment, new residential growth, new legislation, and facility use. This plan will ensure our schools are efficiently utilized, equitably zoned, and aligned with educational priorities and community needs. The district selected Jay Brown Professional Group, or JB Pro, for their experience, data-driven methods, and commitment to inclusive community engagement. The project will deliver a transparent, community-informed roadmap to guide school attendance boundaries, facility use, and consolidation opportunities, and long-term enrollment and capacity planning. This will create an efficient and sustainable plan that supports students and families across the district. This project will begin this month, November 2025, and end March 2026, and will be done in three phases. Phase one is a foundation and engagement done in November and December to analyze enrollment, capacity, and growth data, gather input through community meetings, principal workshops, and student sessions, launch a project website, and install school banners with QR codes for input, and establish guiding principles to shape future options. Phase two will include draft scenarios and feedback, January and part of February, to develop up to three draft boundary scenarios, host additional engagement sessions and stakeholder meetings, share interactive maps, and address lookup tools for family feedback. Phase three is the final plan and adoption, which will be in late February, early March of 2026. In that phase, we will deliver the Comprehensive Educational Facilities Plan, present recommendations to the school board for approval, and provide communication and implementation support. JB Pro's approach centers on transparency and collaboration, including up to 16 community open houses, 16 student discussions, two principal workshops, 10 board member briefings, and 37 school site banners with QR codes linking to project updates. Additionally, there will be a dedicated project website that will provide real-time updates, maps, and feedback opportunities throughout the process. The project also includes all data analysis, engagement events, materials, website development, and final deliverables provided by JB Pro. The deliverables include the comprehensive final plan in both print and digital, interactive boundary maps and feedback tools, as well as community input summaries and implementation support. The outcome of the project will be data-driven planning for school boundaries and facility use. This initiative reflects a proactive, collaborative approach to ensuring Alachua County Public Schools continues to meet the needs of every student, family, and the community. Through partnership with JB Pro, Alachua County Public Schools is preparing today for a stronger, more equitable future. The superintendent recommends the school board approve the contract with Jay Brown Professional Group, also known as JB Pro, for consolidation as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Is there a motion?
Move with staff recommendation.
Motion by Ms. Sirdan, is there a second? Second by Mr. Vu. Is there discussion? Dr. McNeely.
Mrs. Neal, I was around when we had DRMP. I've spoken to the superintendent about that, and some of the-
And some of the employees with this company were involved with us, with DRMP. We accepted that group when we had key people right in our district who knows the community, who knows the routes, and all of the other things. Your presentation was beautiful, well-done. But I cannot agree with when we have our zoning folk right here in our midst, and who knows everything about our county. To bring in someone or a company, the bottom line is the 175,000 that I see here on the dollar amount. I cannot agree with that amount of money when we have experts right here, you being one, Martha Dean being another, and other folk who work right in our zoning department. I don't want to see us going down as we did before. We spent a lot of time, a lot of money with DRMP. I don't know if we vote tonight to accept this is it. So I have many reservations. The superintendent and I spoke briefly about this. But I need to know the actual facts of what's going to take place. Are we talking about rezoning here? If we're talking about rezoning, how many instructional personnel will be involved? How many parents will be involved? I heard you say three phases. But that doesn't tell me very much of where we are going with this. I'm sorry. I don't have enough information. We've not had enough discussion about it. I think it needs to be workshopped. I know you have a calendar where you say you will be done by March. And I'm saying to just give us this information and beautiful flyers, that's not going to get it with me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, Ms. Playback. Absolutely. Mr. Vu.
You know, the consolidation of our buildings, the land we hold, it's something that needed to happen a long time ago. It's been called out by other organizations like the Florida District Superintendent Association called us out on this too, that we have way too big of a footprint. When you look at other districts too, they have less schools, which means they have less overhead, which means they have more money to put toward teachers. They have more money to put towards resources for our students. And that's just something to me that really needs to start happening. We've been kicking the can on this for decades. And this is something I ran on as well, and I think we need to start it now. It's something that if we wait, there's just always going to be a reason to wait. There's never a great time to do this. There's always an election around the corner. There's always someone who's going to be upset, and that's just the nature of this. And just me personally, in my own experience working in this district as part of a team that more or less got pushed out of the district staff. We actually had a whole system to set this up internally and to do this in-house, and it was rejected by the last administration. So for me, I would rather hire a consulting firm with experience doing this, with the technical know-how, because right now, when you're looking at GIS mapping, being able to create new zones for schools, being able to project new grades, what would the grade of this new school have been if all those same students had got the same scores? That's just something that they can do, that we no longer have the ability to do in-house in this district. So we really have no choice, in my opinion, but to contract it out. And when I'm looking at here, we are using the half-cent sales tax. It's not coming out of general fund. This doesn't mean it's less money for our kids and for our, our teachers and our staff. So again, I will be voting yes on this because it's something that needed to happen over 10 years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Vu, Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with a good bit of what Mr. Vu said. I've read the FADs reports that were, I think there were three of them before I came on board, and then one since I've been on the board. And for a district our size, it was, say, stated we have way too many schools. But even beyond that, about two years ago, when we started this, Mr. Gilfelin did mention lessons learned. That was one of the questions that I asked Dr. Patton and Ms. Neal during my briefing, for them to really come up, because we did stumble out the gate. It was unfortunate that the spot rezoning that in February of '23 that the board voted on to, I think it was, to go forward with spot rezoning to relieve some overcrowding in some West Gainesville schools. Staff worked on that with DRMP. And like Dr. McNeely, you said, we had worked with DRMP before. We worked with the firm, but they had some staffing changes. And the main person who had worked with that company and the district that was between us, he, he left, and they didn't have a local presence. So that was very challenging, is what we were told, the board was told with that. So our footprint is larger. We've got fewer students, the migration west, and the legislation that had been pending for a couple of years and knocking on the door by private school, private charter operators to be able to co-locate into school buildings is really necessitating this, us having to really move on this. And as Mr. Vu said, we had staff that could do a lot of work and had the competencies and skills to do that. We don't have them. We do have zoning staff that's there. But that's, I think the, the level of skill and the things that need to get done, she doesn't have that. And so it being an operational item, and the superintendent bringing it to us, for, to hire someone, external help, I have to lean to her because this is under her purview, and it's something that we need to have done. But I, I did tell her that we can't let this be the third strike because the spot rezoning failed. The comprehensive rezoning that was worked on for so many months, so many iterations, and data came back, it was contaminated, the, just, we kind of looked like, the, the board wasn't working on it, it was staff and this company. But we looked totally incompetent, and like we weren't addressing things. We were putting data out that was not altogether accurate and wasn't changing, and was not addressing the board priorities. So I'm hoping that those are some things that we've, we've taken note of. And I do fully expect that not to be our case this time. And it's really, really imperative that we do become more efficient. Operational efficiency is really key in order for us to continue to be able to have funding, to be able to offer a very robust educational experience for our students, as well as being able to have funding to be able to pay staff. You know, the state sets our required local effort and the inflow that we'll get in based on taxable properties. And if we can either spend the money supporting a lot of half-full schools, or we can get efficient and, and offer more services to students in fewer spaces, because you only have a set amount of money. So I will definitely be supporting this agenda item. Thank you.
Mrs. Playback, Ms. Playback, oh, Dr. McNeely.
Ms. Playback, I'm going to say this, and I want you to listen carefully. When we talk about disengaging certain schools, when we look at the enrollment of our schools, when you look east and when you look west, when you look east, that the majority of those schools are under-enrolled. So guess what? Those schools would be the first targeted ones. And I can understand what my colleagues are saying about shrinking and not having empty buildings. I get that. And especially with the new legislation that's coming out with Schools of Hope, I get that as well. But when I represent, and we all represent all districts, please know citizens who are sitting here, but I'm District One. And the majority of the schools in that district are under-enrolled. So guess what's going to happen? Or can you even figure it out? Because everyone in here knows that we are going to have to downsize at some point. I've spoken with our dear superintendent. We've talked about possibly K8s, maybe K12s. But think about it. Think about what the community and the folk who live on this quadrant of the Alachua County, how they feel about it. And until you come out and say what's going to happen, they won't know. I know, but I'm leaving it to Mrs. Neal, the superintendent, and others to make some wise decisions here. Are we going to close Lake Forest? Are we going to close Shell? Are we going to close Williams? Are we going to close Idowell, Rollins, Metcalf? I doubt Metcalf and Bishop because they are practically new schools. But think about it. And I said to the superintendent most recently, I'm not happy. I'm not happy with the situation that we find ourselves in with low enrollment. But more importantly, coming to my side of the town, saying this one, and this one, and this one will need to be either increased. And we know that people west, I don't care if you have DRMP or this company, they aren't coming on this side, Ms. Neal, and you know it. And everyone else knows it. Unless you've got some dynamic situations that's going to incentivize people to want to come. They're not coming for the arts, because I ran an art school. And in my school, I had two white students to show up. I said, I shared that with Dr. Patton just the other day. So when you talk about co-location or Schools of Hope, that's scary. I understand that. But it's even scarier to ride down, up and down East Gainesville, and this building is gone, or this building has shut. Ms. Playback, I'm going to be quiet so you can understand what I'm saying. I wish I could have all of the community from East Gainesville sitting in here, listening to me, because I know what's going to happen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, Ms. Playback.
So obviously, I live on the west side of town. And my kids went to Beuholt's, and my son went to St. Francis, and I teach at St. Francis. So I get what's going on on the west side of town versus the east side of town. I guess when I got this beautiful proposal, that's nice and pretty, I, first thing I said to myself, what happened the first time? What happened years ago when we started to do this? And I watched, I was teaching at GHS then, and so I was in the middle of all of it. And then it kind of went, didn't happen, because the west side of town does not want to move to the east side of town. And I get it. I grew up in Virginia when we had busing, when we moved kids, and I get, I get it. And people move into communities for a reason. They want to go to Beuholt's, or they want to go to Hidden Oak, or they want. So I get, I get it. I understand completely. I don't think, and I think the timeline it's given us doesn't even leave one day to miss to get to the end of that proposal in March. And there's other things on the agenda, maybe a superintendent's search. So I think there's so much going on. But I don't think we really would have been prompted with this if it wasn't for the Schools of Hope. I think the Schools of Hope really brought this to a head. And frankly, I think that if we have buildings that are not used, charter schools should be able to utilize the building if we don't have the students in it. Are we moving students into it because we don't want the Schools of Hope to come into our schools? We don't know that. We don't know. Well, but why not? Why can't those charter schools use it? Well, obviously, I teach at a Catholic school, so I'm about that. But then again, that is our public schools. I think what bothers me this is what's the buy-in for these people? I'm not sure. They're doing what is directed by them. The other schools that they have mentioned here are in different kinds of communities in Gainesville. We have a huge university in the center of our town. And it's a division that's been in this town forever. It's never been a melting pot of, wow, I want to go to Eastside High School, not because their IB program is there, because I want to be at Eastside High School. It's never been that kind of community that I grew up in in Virginia. We never had this division between the east side of town and the west side of town. There's never going to be a good answer to this, Dr. McNeely. And I know people are going to lose jobs. If we close schools, what happens to those teachers? What happens to the teachers that are in Lake Forest? Can we accommodate them in other schools? Do we have to do something? Yes, we do have a lot of empty schools, and we have to do something. But I'm not sure if this is something that we should do right, right? I mean, like, why this company? I agree. I don't think our staff, though, can take on anymore. I think our staff is really overworked. But what happened to all the material that we got from these other two, this DRP? I wasn't here, but I watched about it. So where's all that information? Why, even though this is $175,000, that's not our money? It is our money. It's sales tax money, and we have to be responsible for it. I, I really, I really am caught between a rock and a hard place on this. And I think that, even though I think that we need to investigate it, I think this proposal that they put every two months, they go to the next phase, and I think it's really, really, really tight. I don't, because this wants to be ready by next school year. And we have to have parent involvement. We have to have community involvement. We have to, we really are making the decision, but the community is really driving it. And the community needs to drive it. So I think right now, I'm not going to vote for this because I think we need more reflection on it. But I also would like to know if, what happened to the information that we paid all those thousands of dollars before that we've not utilized? Where is that information? It's out here somewhere. So that's kind of where I am right now. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Playback. Ms. Sirdan, did you have more? Okay. So a few things. First is, this has to happen. It's not just the Schools of Hope. There's many reasons. I'm going to start with the most important one, which is the students. And none of us wants to think about what happens when we have multiple under-enrolled schools and we have declining student enrollment. Because obviously, if there's declining student enrollment and multiple under-enrolled schools, we're led to one conclusion, that schools are going to close. And none of us wants the school that our kids went to, that we taught at, that we attended, to be the one that gets closed. And I can, I can tell you that from personal experience. The, the high school that I went to, that I loved, I had the best experience there. My graduating class was almost 1,000 students. We had 4,500 students in my high school, like almost twice the size of Beuholt's. And when I went there, we had dozens, literally dozens of AP courses, and honors courses, and extracurriculars. That school is looking at closing because it's down to 850 students, less than my graduating class was. And it breaks my heart that the school that I went to, that I loved, that I used to substitute teach at, is going to be closing. But the students who are there, they have three AP classes instead of dozens. They don't have the same number of clubs and extracurriculars. And that is a disservice to students. And while we don't have that same degree of disservice, we do have a disservice to students. We have students who don't have as many specials teachers or don't have as many elective options because they're in a school that doesn't have as many students. We are also doing our students a disservice by spending money on empty classrooms. And I would be all for the Schools of Hope if... And I would be all for the schools of hope if, because remember, when a student goes to a charter school, they don't just get the student funding, they get the capital funding. If they had to give us back that capital funding to pay for those empty classrooms, I would be all for it because then we could keep those buildings open. But that's not how it works. Those students get double capital funds because we're still paying to keep the school open and the charter school gets their capital funding and operational funding. We don't get any of that. If they had to pay their portion of utilities, their portion of custodial, their portion of maintenance, their portion of property casualty insurance, I would not, I would still have some issues because how do we arrange bell schedules for two schools with different schedules? How do we deal with two different sets of discipline in the same building? How do we deal with keeping students together because the charter school gets to stay together if we have a science lab wing? You know, how do we give them contiguous space? So there, there would be a lot of logistical issues, but at least I could say, okay, like this is a way to deal with shifting enrollment and keep all of our buildings open. But that's not the reality. The reality is that every school building that's open costs us between three quarters of a million and a million dollars a year. That's for utilities, insurance, maintenance, custodial staff, food service staff, administrative staff, and school resource officer, as well as probably some other things I'm forgetting. But that's money when you have five, six under-enrolled schools and you could instead have three fully enrolled schools that give more opportunities to students and you could save $2.5 million a year. That's money you can reinvest in kids. That's money you can use to fix broken ACs, fix broken roofs, pay bus drivers more so our buses come on time. Like, that's, that's what we're looking at. And we're looking at a dwindling budgetary situation where, you know, we said earlier, less than 1% increase in the base student allocation from the state. We all know inflation is more than 1%, but we're, we're being asked to do the same and more with, with what amounts to less money after inflation. So we cannot be inefficient. We have to be efficient. We cannot compete with charter schools and private schools if our under-enrolled schools don't offer the same kinds of opportunities because there aren't enough kids to offer the AP, the honors, the gifted courses. Then, you know, to the contract, we, there has to be a middle ground. DRMP did not charge a whole lot because a lot was put on our staff here to do. And the capacity to do that, it was a burden on our staff here. It was hard on DRMP. And we just did not get the kinds of results we needed from that rezoning. We also, you know, we had listening sessions, but when I look at this plan, we're talking student, student discussion sessions. I don't think we had a single student discussion session last time. Principal workshops. Even just the PR of putting out the QR code banners so that people get the information and know where they can provide feedback. Those, those are things that we were missing last time. And I think one of the reasons things failed last time is we didn't have a fully involved firm. You know, we had DRMP and they do great work, but they were just doing the GIS mapping. That was it. Everything else was, staff was conveying information to them. We were presented with a firm after that failed, and that was $250,000. And the board unanimously said, no, we're not spending that much money. So to me, this is a middle ground in terms of cost. It's going to give us a lot more than DRMP gave us. And we just, we cannot continue in this financial situation to be inefficient. We have to operate efficiently. Otherwise, we're harming students. So that is where I stand. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell, for allowing me to speak. You covered a little, a good bit of what I was going to say, but Mr. Vu mentioned that for years, we, this has been put off and I think it was Ms. Playback, you said we've been kicking the can down. You're right, we have not done a rezoning, a comprehensive rezoning that was set, I think, since 2002. My daughter was rising fourth grader. So it was second and third grade when they did it, and she was a rising fourth grader because she moved from Talbot to Norton. That's the last time we did a comprehensive rezoning. That's why in '23, February '23, the suggestion was to do a smaller group of schools, acclimate the staff, the community, everybody gets a buy-in, and we do that to relieve those pressure points. That was botched. Then it was said, let's do a comprehensive rezoning. We all know, the superintendent at that time came back and said, don't, don't adopt those maps. So we've had that delay. We lost a lot of time in there where we could have addressed the, some of these issues that we're dealing with now. And it's not just schools of hope, but it is schools of hope. And Dr. Rockwell, I won't rehash what she said, but it is like, that is a pressing thing because we're, those people will come into the building, yes, they're, they're charters, getting state money. And I would be fine with it if they were, if we were splitting costs. But when they get to keep more money and we got to subsidize them, I have a problem with that. That puts us at a disadvantage. And the legislature have been told that the way that law is written right now is district schools will be paying more and we have to pay for their transportation costs. Charters have no zone. We've heard the challenges here from parent, or two parents here, mentioned getting children to school. So for that alone, to me, rises on, on the top of the list in addition to the cost, but the, and, and transportation costs are not fully funded by the state. So they're telling us, we got to co-locate them in a building, pay all the operational costs, they get the PCO money, we got to keep the building up, and then pay the security, pay the nurse, pay the guidance, all that food service, and pay for transportation costs? Deal breaker for me. Deal breaker for me. We can't, we, recruiting and retaining school bus drivers has been one of the biggest challenges since I've been on the board. The board has, over the years, raised the pay to become competitive because we were training drivers and they were leaving, going to work at RTS, things of that nature. We've gotten to where our beginning pay, I think, is equal to what RTS is. So that's kind of stemmed the tide of folks leaving. But it is, that's a hard position to recruit because it's a split shift. And really, right now, CDL people can go and work at Amazon or someplace like that with the CDL, not have a split shift, not have kids screaming and fighting and carrying on, on the bus or whatever they, that they deal with on the bus. And at that job, it becomes more appealing than working with the school district. And what we, the, the amount of juggling that it takes to keep every route covered just to transport the district schools' students, talking about adding on a, another one. And it is unfortunate with the growth patterns and things of where we, where the way the, the county and things have grown. And it's unfortunate that pass boards did not address this and sort of adjust and move students. It's unfortunate that in 2002, when they did the last rezoning, that they went to neighborhood schools so that folks got used to going to schools that were within two miles. Well, everybody's not going to be able to go to schools within two miles of their, with, because we can't just go build a school because we got all of those people out there. But we also can't afford to have eight elementary schools that are severely under-enrolled. We just can't, we can't afford to do it. And folks, that required local effort. If you look at it, plot it on a line, it's decreasing. Yes, property values are increasing, but the required local effort and the increase in the BSA, not keeping pace with CPI, the district just can't afford to just continue to just, to operate like that. And it's unfortunate that we're the ones that got to deal with it. It wasn't dealt with two years ago. That was one of the five initial, five things that the board agreed upon. We wanted to get done before we started a search. It didn't get done. Strategic planning was another one. Didn't get done. But, so we're here now and as Dr. Rockwell said, this is a fewer dollars than what we paid, the, what we would have paid to WXY or XYW or whatever it is. But with that one, I was like, I'm not voting for this right here because you guys just botched up something. We're not going to spend money on that for. But now I do have confidence that we can get some stuff done. And I did have concerns. I told Dr. Patton that about the timeline, it's tight. But I think if we get going and it ends up needing to be adjusted for, you know, we may end up having to do what in essence almost may be like a spot rezoning. We might have to, may have to, once you start working and you seeing where you're moving and you can't go, you can always shrink your scope. We can do that. That doesn't just say because this is in here, that's, but that's what they have planned. But I think everybody knows, we, we trust our administrator to be able to adjust the plans as necessary if, if moving out doesn't work. But I think saying we're going to sit on this because we got something else going is, that's why we're in this predicament right now. So thank you for allowing me to come back again and, and speak.
Thank you, Ms. Sirdan. Mr. Vu.
Yeah, just really quick, just because, you know, motivations for this were brought up and I just want to speak to mine. This is something I've pushed since I, you know, before I was in office. This is something I had pushed once I got into office. And, remember Playback, like, it was even at a workshop where I was bringing a lot of this stuff up again and again, you know? So for me, this is something I've been wanting to happen just since day one. You know, now here we are, almost a year later of taking office, and I'm really glad we are at this point, just for, again, greater operational efficiency. When we are inefficient, we are cheating our staff and we are cheating our kids. Because again, that is less that we can give them. And if we kick this can again, we are just going to continue to cheat the futures of our kids. And that's just my position.
Thank you, Mr. Vu. Dr. McNeely.
Mrs. Neal, I don't know if you can even answer the question that I'm getting ready to propose to you. Who is the leader for this particular organization? And I hope you're not going to say Gilworth.
The leader of the organization, the person that we will be working with, the primary person, is Kathy Ebaugh.
So it's not John?
John is a part of the team. The lead person is Kathy Ebaugh and Nick, and I forgot Nick's last name, but Nick is the other gentleman. So those are the primary principal involvement.
You've answered my question. You told me the leader, but you also called that individual's name. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Is there anything else? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries three, two with Ms. Playback and Dr. McNeely in dissent. And now we are going to take a brief recess.
Thank you.
That's why I gotta go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let y'all go first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, who the worst.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
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 the superintendent search. Ms. Terry.
Good evening. Back again. So, tonight, I'm going to review with you three different search process options. And then, I also, Mr. Jeff Garcia is going to be here for any questions that I may not be able to answer and that he can go in deeper with you. All right, so, we have three options that we're going to talk about tonight for the search process. The first one is a direct contract with a single experienced qualified firm that has a history of successful superintendent placements. The second we're going to talk about is to perform a request for information, or an RFI, with multiple qualified firms. And then, the third option we have is to complete the request for proposal, which is an RFP process. So, I'm going to go into detail about each of those. So, the first one, the direct contract option, that is where we would identify a search firm that has a successful record for the given scope of work. And then, we would begin by, or the work would begin by having the signing of a binding agreement. And so, then, also with the process and the timeframe. And then, the contract as a professional service provider. And with that, it means that it is exempt from competition under state board rules. And the cost is approximately forty-eight thousand to fifty-five thousand. There it is. All right, the second one is the RFI option, which is to look for, it's a request for information. And there, the district would still identify multiple search firms with a record of success. And then, the firms would present directly to the board, either at a workshop or at a meeting. And at the conclusion of the presentations, the board would talk about what they heard, and they would select the firm to contract with. The vote for the award of the contract occurs at a board meeting. So, that means if the workshop, the firms come at a workshop, then the vote wouldn't happen there. The vote would then come to the next board meeting. And then, begin work upon signing of the binding agreement, once again, that process and timeframe. And then, contracted as the first one, as a professional service provider, which is exempt from the competition under state board rules. And then, that cost is about the same as the first option, forty-eight thousand to The third option is a RFP, and that option takes about six to eight weeks for the whole process. The cost is still about the same, but it could possibly increase depending on the level of service. And so, the process timeframe, this is where this process differs from the other two. The RFP is advertised and opened for submissions of proposals. So, we, as the district, do not choose at this point, we do not choose those firms. We put it out there, and firms then come to us. The RFP closes approximately twenty-one to thirty days later. And then, after purchasing, it's held the public open of the submissions and verifies that each submission conforms to the requirements. Then, we have a, usually, that would take one to three days, depending on how many came in. Then, there would be a proposal evaluation committee, and they would review those folks that came in, those companies that came in. And that is done like a paper screening. So, the committee would review them individually. They don't meet together. They review them individually, and that usually takes one to two weeks. And then, they come, it's culminating with a public meeting to review of the scoring and finalization of a short list. And then, that the short list of firms are recommended to come in for an in-person interview with the board. So, that short list of organizations give their presentation to the board, and then, the board discusses and votes and determines which firm to award the contract to. In the following two to four weeks after that, then, the firm meets with the board to outline the process and to finalize the calendar for the search and the selection process. Then, once the calendar and timeline are set, then the superintendent search or selection process actually begins. So, just in comparing all three options, the direct contract is one that you just select one firm, they come in, they're able to do it. And the RFI process, it's kind of a semi-formal process where we still select those, we go out while purchasing, and they would go out and they would determine these firms that have been successful in superintendent searches. And then, those, they would come in and give presentations to the board. Then, the last one, it takes the most time, but it's the one that goes out, there is no input from the district until after the paper screening is done. And then, once the paper screening is done, those short list of companies come in, they talk with you all, and they are given, you all would ask them certain questions, and then determine who that firm would be. Then, once the firm is selected, then timelines from there would be set with that company. Other additional considerations, one, there's always going to be, on top of the cost of the search firm, there's always going to be cost of travel and accommodations for the finalists. That is our responsibility. And then, after the contract, that's when they will, the company will come in, they will develop the calendar, the candidate qualities, and get input from internal, I mean, internal stakeholders and external stakeholder, sorry, I'm calling them candidates, external stakeholders. Any questions?
Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move we direct the purchasing department to issue a request for proposals from qualified firms for a nationwide superintendent search.
Motion by Mr. Vu, seconded by Ms. Sirdan. Ms. Green, do you need that read again? Okay. And now, discussion, Ms. Playback.
Ms. Terry, do you know what processes we used in the last six superintendents? Jeff, you would have to help me with that. Because it's been all over, it's been all over the place.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Thank you, Board Chair. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Superintendent. There, as far as I'm aware, there was not a formal process. There has not been any type of contract that's gone through the purchasing department to identify a firm that would then handle that process in a silo, the whole concept being that we don't have as much input, other than the candidate qualities that we're searching for. The idea is to not have the district put their thumb on the scale for any one particular candidate from any particular region or with any particular background. We would set out a certain list of qualifications, a certain list of work experience that we would be desiring, and then, that firm's job would be to go out and perform that search nationally, all fifty states.
So, what I guess, what I'm asking is, Dr. Roberts, all, Dr. Simon was with internal. I mean, what superintendent that we've gotten has used one of these processes?
So, Dr. Roberts was already in his seat when I arrived at the district in February of 2016. I don't know what that process was.
I know I was on the DAC and interviewed him, so I don't know how he was procured to come here.
I do not know. All I know is that there has not been a formal procurement coming from the purchasing department to hire a firm to perform the search. What method the board?
It's been on state association.
Yeah. Yeah, Florida School Board Association. We would lean on them, they have great expertise, they work with all sixty-seven counties in the state. However, my mandate as the purchasing manager is the most fair and open competition possible. So, with all contracts, we want as much competition as possible. So, whether the firm is a state agency, a state association, or just a marketing and research firm out of Seattle, Washington, that doesn't matter to us. If they provide us the best product or the best service, that's who we hire, so long as it's for the best use of funds that are originating from the taxpayer.
So, it seems like, and I could be wrong, but the RFP would be the one that would put it out there, and you would get the most?
You're talking about purchasing.
Exposure. Well, by what you described and what Ms. Terry, I guess, Ms. Terry, you could say, you could answer that. The RFP would, if you put that out there, then, yes, you are going to get more candidates, hopefully, companies coming in. On the other ones, the district selects those, like, on the first one, it's just one company. On the second one, the RFI, it would be, the district would select three or four companies to look at. With the RFP, it's out there nationally, then anyone can apply for it. It's actually more objective, because we have no input. Yes. Initially, so that's really better, because then we get more exposure, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the idea. We get as many firms. Now, that does not preclude an association like FSBA from being awarded a contract.
Mm-hmm.
If they offer us the best terms, the best service, the best pricing, they get the award. We operate as objectively as possible. There is some subjectivity when you have a proposal evaluation committee, because those are three, five, or seven human beings.
And who's on that committee?
That is to be determined. Once we actually advertise this solicitation, then we'll determine with input from senior staff who that evaluation committee will be. For this type of procurement, we haven't done it in my tenure, in ten years. I would presume it to be a varying body of people. I would not, I would not expect the minimum of three, I would expect at least five or seven committee members, members of the public, members of staff, members of administration, to provide as many varying opinions as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, to kind of get the best-fit firms. Because, remember, this isn't the process to hire the superintendent, this is just the process to hire the firm to go find candidates to present to the school board.
So, Mr. Vu, who made the motion? Mr. Vu, is your motion the RFP?
Yes, because I want, I don't want to just go with just one, you know, firm. I don't want to just go with FSBA, that's what normally happens, but just, in my own experience, as somebody in the staff too, watching the last time FSBA oversaw a search, we just picked an internal candidate, which.
Right. So, I just wanted to clarify what your motion was.
Right.
Okay.
Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Garcia, since you were not here for all of the different searches, unfortunately, maybe fortunately, I have. And thinking back with the RFP, I always thought, for some reason, that our association was the final, final, Florida School Board Association. Whether we had selected internally already, we've spent money with them and voted in an internal candidate. I remember that distinctly. But I'm hoping that we would, and I would support my colleague, Mr. Vu, with the RFP proposal, because I would like to see a national search, and you have more candidates, you have more opportunities, so that's why I would be suggesting that. But I do have a question for Ms. Terry, because I requested during our workshop on the fifteenth, that we would have a time to discuss the superintendent search period. And you may think, well, that's what we're doing. And you may think, well, that's what we are doing. I have some things that I need to say, and so I would have to make an amendment in order to do that. Is that correct, Attorney Delaney?
Well, I'm not sure what amendment you want to offer.
The offer that we have discussion other than just the firm or that we are going to go with.
So, the process, if I'm understanding you correctly, would be that you could offer an amendment to Mr. Vu's motion, see if there's a second to your proposed amendment, then there would be discussion about the amendment. That would come up for a vote, and it would either pass or not pass, and then we would go forward with either an amended motion or the original motion.
In other words, Attorney Delaney, you're saying that the motion that colleague Vu made, I would need to make an amendment to say that I want to have discussion about the search, rather than just the assignment of which company we are going with? Because I did ask for that to be on the agenda, and for some reason, it's not there.
Well, I'm going to defer to the Chair, who is in charge of wrangling the discussion amongst the Board members. But you certainly have the option, if you want to make a change to Mr. Vu's motion and have particular timeframes on it or something like that, the, the way to go forward with that would be an amendment to his motion, or you could just, with the Chair having the ultimate say on whether the discussion is germane to the pending motion, other aspects or the impacts of this action item.
Okay. I guess the question, Madam Chair, is, an amendment, hopefully, I would be able to propose a friendly amendment, so that we can have a discussion about the search before we move into the decision about one or, one of the three things. Because it, it seems as if we are going to talk about which phase we would want, phase one, phase two, or phase three. And it may be consensus for phase three, but I want to make sure that we have an opportunity, if we're going with phase three, if we're going with one or two. It does, it matters for me, but whichever one, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to speak about the search coming up, and how quickly, the timeframe, and so forth.
So, Mr. Delaney, I, I'm just a little bit confused, because my understanding was we brought this to a workshop first, so that we could have the broader discussion of-
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chairman, and when you finish, I'm going to speak, because that's not what I requested as a Board member, even though we had discussion some on the 15th of October.
We discussed for over an hour on the 15th, and I believe that what was put on the agenda was what Mr. Delaney summarized as the consensus from that discussion. Is that correct, Mr. Delaney?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, that said, Dr. McNeely, I'm not going to stop you from saying what you need to say, so please, I will yield the microphone back to you.
I need to offer the motion that before we decide on one, two, or three, that we need to discuss about the superintendent's search. And if that means included in, once we say which one, one, two, or three, then we go in and have that discussion, that the firm, or the firms, or the company will be advertising and selecting. That's all I want to be able to do and say.
I, I don't know what's, what's being offered. Can you please help, Mr. Delaney?
Sure, sure. I think what I'm understanding Dr. McNeely is asking for is an opportunity to weigh in on the timeframe of these searches. I think that there will be, no matter which way the Board goes with the three options, there will be additional items that need to come before the Board. Eventually, there's going to be a contract, right, that needs to come before the Board, and that would be another opportunity to discuss, well, is this the contract that the Board wants to accept because of the various terms, price, timing, so forth? So-
I, I think, Attorney Delaney, the bottom line here for me is whichever company we should decide, or whichever team we should decide, I want to be clear, from this, from my four other colleagues, that we have not had a discussion, and I don't care if it was an hour, Chairman, sometimes we go even longer than what we have established as far as the workshop, but we have not come up with a vote, because we can't vote at workshops. So, it would be a vote this evening about whether we are going to go with one, two, or three, and what is the process for the timeframe for that. That's where, that's where I'm going, and I think you all know that.
So, I, I think if you want to amend the motion, you would include something in it of the timeline that you want, so that then we can discuss that.
Okay, I can do that. The timeframe with me talking with Andrea Messini, the Florida School Board Association Chief or Director, when I said in, on October 15th, that the timeframe had, was really passing, that she had indicated that if we are going to do a search and be done with it by the end of '26, for the new superintendent to roll in, then we had to get started immediately. I said that, and the minutes should reflect that of what I said on the 15th. But for some reason, I guess the discussion on the 15th that we had at the workshop was sufficient enough for my colleagues, is that what you're saying? And that all we need to do tonight is make a decision as to which firm we are going to go with, and, and, and no context for the timeframe that we must have.
I'm, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues and whether they felt that that discussion was sufficient, but I will say, you know, we, we have a motion on the floor. I'm not going to tightly police your discussion around that if, I don't know. Mr. Vu?
Yeah, so I'll just clarify this, you know, for, for me, the motion is just literally to pick the process, and so for me, it's this process of just putting it out there to then select, you know, the firm eventually, right? But this is just authorizing staff to go out there and figure that out. What's the landscape out there to, you know, have someone, or have a group, have a company, et cetera, find candidates for us? And I know when we had this discussion of timelines at the workshop, I do feel like there were, I feel like, three more or less different views, right? The, the view of starting somebody in July 2026, some, I think someone else said 2028, and my view was in the middle, 2027, because I want there to be a smooth transition time, and I think, I don't think he's here anymore, but like Mr. Gilfillan said, that we've never had that, at least since I've lived in this county, to where we've had this overlap, where we've had this ability to hand something off really smoothly. And when it comes to just district operations, when it comes to just the point of view of just our staff, the community, it's something that I've heard a lot, please make this orderly, please make this something that, you know, isn't just abrupt, where we're not just cutting loose everything the old person did, so this new person can put their stamp on everything. That's not what I want, you know, ultimately. So, I agreed with you, remember, at the last meeting, that 100% we had to start now, because to start doing an orderly process, we have to start now. I also don't feel, though, that like, we are ready to have a new person roll in in July 2026. I think the earliest we could have someone roll in is January 2027, just because of all the issues we are facing right now as a district. We're still trying to fill out our finance team. We have new people in high-level positions. We are under state sanction, and so I agree with, you know, a lot of some comments made by the community too. I, I agree with a lot of what they said about the state we're in now. And if we get out of that state that she outlined very clearly to me, we, we're going to be in a better spot, and we're going to attract better candidates. And my number one fear is moving too quickly, having a failed search, and then that's a huge black mark on us, and that's a reputation cost I'm not willing to bear personally. I think that was the only disagreement, was like a timeline of six months between us, but other than that, I'm okay with moving ahead with the motion on the floor as is, just because, again, I, I do think we need to figure out what that landscape is of search firms, so we can get the best one, can get us the best candidates.
Madam Chair, I'm going to respond to the colleague, Mr. Vu. I understand him completely, but I disagree with him totally. And I'm going to now share my thoughts, if I may.
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you. Dr. Patton has provided, and I've said this to her personally, some stability during these past couple of months, and I continue to hear that her role has been significant. The interim role is by design temporary, and our students, and our staff, and community deserve a leader who's going to be fully invested in the future of the district. And you could say, well, Dr. Patton is doing just that. Please hear me out. I want to see someone, and even though Mr. Vu said it seems rushed, and you don't want any overlap, come on. When your new superintendent, whether it's '27 or when it's '28, when it's your time for reelection, Mr. Vu, superintendents are going to come in with their desires and turn things upside down if they so choose. We know that we must come up with a targeted solution. To extend Dr. Patton's contract until 2027 is not acceptable to me. Launching a superintendent search shows that we are taking deliberate, responsible steps to ensure strong, stable leadership. A permanent superintendent will commit to long-term goals, be accountable for measurable progress, and when leadership is uncertain, morale, please hear me out, morale and retention suffer. A permanent superintendent can attract and retain high-quality personnel who want to work in a stable, forward-looking district. Continuing with Dr. Patton, and she knows what, because we talk quite frequently, until June 2027, signals uncertainty and hesitation, whereas launching a superintendent's search demonstrates decisive and responsible governance. Now, we all received a letter from the Honorable Alina Bennett Lawson, and I just want to acknowledge that. I'm not going to read her letter that she sent to us, but I want to acknowledge it. Furthermore, I'm going to continue to say, we've weathered a lot of change lately, haven't we, members? So, every time leadership changes, Mr. Vu and my other colleagues, priorities will shift, and momentum can stall. Our educators and staff deserve to know that their hard work is building towards something lasting. Stability at the top fosters trust at every level, and trust fuels motivation, creativity, and teamwork. Interim leadership, as we have seen with Dr. Patton, can hold things together, but only permanent leadership can truly build. We all want best, we say, what's best for our schools, and right now, that means giving our district the stable, inspired leadership it deserves. It's time, I said some months ago, when the superintendent, I don't know if it was, no, it wasn't the 15th. Yes, it was. It was the 15th, that it was time to take the next step, moving together with a leader who's here to stay. A permanent superintendent isn't just an administrative choice. It's a strategic investment, and we talk about investments all of the time, a strategic investment in our district's future. We also know how much uncertainty affects our classrooms, and every time leadership changes, priorities, as you know, will shift. New initiatives will start over, and we have heard on many different occasions how many new initiatives we have, and I'm not going to name them, because you know the major ones that we have. Sometimes those new initiatives can stall. And so, through it all, the ones we are responsible for holding it together and keeping learning consistent for our students. That's why it's time to speak up, and I know that many of our employers, or not employers, but people who work for us, people who are employed by us, they are not going to speak up because of what? They need their jobs. They need, and, and citizens, hopefully, will be the voice to speak up for the people who work for us, whether it's the classroom, whether it's non-instructional, whether it's food service, whether it's bus transportation. We need someone who will stand with us, and Dr. Patton has been standing with us for a couple of months. In fact, it's no longer a couple of months, for one year, from November to this number. But we need someone for the long, long haul. We need people who will listen to teachers' voices and turn their ideas into sustained action. Build a strong vision that outlast transitions and temporary fixes. I hope that we could unite behind the vision of permanent leadership that's here for the long haul. And I know that you all are saying, well, that's what we plan to do in 2027. Well, some of us will possibly not be here. I know I won't after 2028, and maybe Mr. Vu will be the Lone Ranger. I don't know. But we need, I didn't mean that, Mr., to serve, to listen, and we need people and a leader to come in and take the realm. I've said a, a whole lot that I hope you're listening to me when you do make the decision with whichever phase one, two, or three that we are going to step into. Madam Chairperson, Dr. Rockwell, thank you for allowing me to go on, but those are my thoughts. That's what I hold dearly, and I'm speaking in reference to our employees, but it's left to the five of us here. It's unfortunate that people can come and speak and talk to us individually and write to us individually, but yet we hold fast to the decisions that we are making. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Sirdan.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. I was going to call it a question, but I'm going to just read off a couple of dates, because it was thrown out that some people ran on something to do. So, when three, March 1st of 2022, when Dr. Simon was terminated, there were four seats up. I advocated for us to have an interim, so that the next Board could choose. March, April of 18th, April 18th of 2023, the then-Board voted to go with FSBA to do a search, and it would start January 2024. May 1st of 2023, workshop was presented by FSBA CEO. She came in, told us how to position the district, where we asked ourselves some questions if we were ready to do a search. May 2nd, 2023, superintendent evaluations were received, and the contract, his contract then ended June 24th. So, I'm trying to figure out where- So I'm trying to figure out where, how you, how you, all of a sudden, when you had the chance to do the search, you chose not to. You all voted to postpone the superintendent's search until January 2024 to honor Andrew's contract until then and extend it out. October 17, 2023, the FSBA contract was on the agenda. Then they, you all voted to not approve that. Myself, Dr. Rockwell, voted to move forward, so we weren't losing end of the vote. December 5, 2023, superintendent, you all voted to make him permanent. And some of the same people that came tonight saying, we needed stability, we needed this, we needed that, were in support of that. 4:45 on PM, December 1st, 2023, he emailed us a contract extension that had a date going through December 26 with a significant increase in pay and benefits. October 15, 2024, superintendent evaluations were supposed to just be received. And it was in that meeting, it was a 3-2 vote. Myself, Dr. Rockwell, were on the losing end of that. You all, you all terminated him. You voted to terminate him without cause, given 20 weeks of severance, which ended up being about $87,000 and some change, just kind of quickly doing it. On November 14, 2024, that was the effective date of his termination, and we had to hire, you know, we, we were, we were thrown into this thrust of another superintendent change. I advocated real hard to do a search, like we promised, like I promised, like Dr. Rockwell promised, but y'all voted differently. So here we are now, we're in a different place than where we were back then. And no, I'm not going to vote to do a search right now. That's going to probably make you, and you can corral everybody up, but I'm not voting to do that, because that is not going to position this organization to be successful for students. I'm just one vote, and I recognize that. I'm just one. Takes three to have a majority. But we would be very challenged to get an employer, an employee that would be worth their weight in salt to come with another divided board, somebody to uproot their family and their career and to come here in the middle of something as state oversight needing to rezone. We've got, we have some challenges that we need to get, 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 get resolved. But all of a sudden, to flip over and to act like you're the only one who wants, wants a long-term superintendent. We had somebody, y'all wanted to ride off into the, to the sunset, which y'all said he was the person, and we tried to work with him. But we didn't terminate him. We didn't put us into this spot. So I don't appreciate being castigated as somebody who doesn't want to do a search now. It's like the search was okay as long as you wanted to do the search. Or the search is not okay as long as you don't want to do the search. So right now, let's just step back. The process, the motion on the floor is for us to explore companies that will come in. And Mr. Vu has made the motion for us to consent an RFP tonight. That is what the, the motion is. And when we were in the, in the workshop, the consensus was moving towards extending her contract beyond June of 2026. We didn't say a date. We said it would be extended beyond that, but that's what's the consensus of the majority of the board on October 15. But what we said that we would do is we would go with some option of selecting a firm to do the search. And then we, as a board, would have to revise the job description and do some other things. But right now, tonight, all this is, is, is on the, the motion here is for us to select an option for how we're going to do the search. Will we just do a sole source? You know, one of those three options. And the motion on the floor is to, what has been motioned, and second is RFP. So I'm, I'm not committing to doing a search immediately. You know, it takes three votes to do that. I could be outvoted again. But at this point, that's where, where I stand. But I don't, I don't like that, all of a sudden now that, you know, you decided that we should do a search, and you want to, you're upset that we won't, won't go that route with you. But I don't think that for the organization. And there's change. Change is very hard. I get that, and there are a lot of initiatives. But I could, I have some other notes that I would give there, but I'm just going to leave it at that. And I'm, I'm ready to vote now, Madam Chair.
Ms. Playback.
First of all, I wasn't even here when all this went down. So I'm just sitting here, listening to everything that's going down. I have observed, I have observed, so y'all is not me. I think y'all went to Dr. McNeely, so I'm just letting the y'all go right here. All right, so I wasn't there on this one. However, when I first got the agenda, I noticed that initially, the superintendent contract was on there. That was up for discussion, and then it miraculously went bye-bye, and it wasn't on the agenda. So I think the superintendent contract was on there, and I was told initially it was on there because Chair wanted to talk about the discussion of the extension of the contract. And I think that's appropriate, to have an idea on the timeline for the search. But that came off the agenda. So I understand what Dr. McNeely's saying about having to have some concrete timeframe for all of us, because we can throw the RFP out there. But what happens if Ms. Terry or whoever says, oh, my God, you cannot believe this superintendent that applied for the job? Are we just going to say, sorry? We don't want to consider you, because we don't want anybody till 2027? So why are we starting the search if we don't want anybody until 2027? So I think all of us in education, and Mr. Vu knows, I love rubrics, and I love timeline, and I love something concrete, because we have to have an idea of what we're shooting for. Certainly, if there is nobody good, we're not going to take them just because they're there. And we want the best for our community, and we want the best for our students and our teachers. And change, we have a lot of change. I, I totally agree, and we've all gotten the emails. So I think it's hard to vote on this without a timeline. I think it's really hard, because we're just saying, go out there, spend the money, send it out there for the search. But then we're also saying, well, we really don't want to consider this till maybe 2027. This is 2025.
This is a process. You're trying to get, we're soliciting vendors who would do the search for us.
But, yeah, I think there's just a little bit of confusion. The request for proposals is proposals for a search firm, not for superintendents to apply.
Well, eventually, they are, correct?
Right, but it's, what we're looking at is proposals from different firms who would be able to conduct a search, and the, the fees that are estimated fees that the firm would charge if we were to hire them.
All right, so maybe, okay.
I, I just want to make sure you know what the motion on the floor is.
Madam Chair, I call the question if I'm recognized. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vu has called the question. Is there a second?
No.
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, there's, we-
I'll say it after the vote.
Okay. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye. It means that we move to an immediate vote on the issue and discussion closes. All those in favor of calling the question? Aye. Those opposed? The motion does not carry. It needs four votes to pass. Dr. McNeely, you're recognized.
I need to say this to my colleague, my friend. Without calling names, you've certainly inferred some things I'm surprised at. And we'll have that discussion personally. But I want to say publicly, many of the timeframes that you said, there are some interjections that I need to come back to say why certain things were managed, why certain things were done. And you left out some particular things that needed to be said. Because this board meeting is being taped, I will not do what you just did. But we will talk independently, and I just wanted you to know that. And I wanted my other colleagues to know that, because I've never seen such as I've seen tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Ms. Playback, did you have? Okay.
If it pleases the Chair, may I interject?
Yes, yes.
So the timeline is completely undetermined. This is simply to move forward with the concept of sole, uh, sole service provider, bring in a few service providers, to interview them, to identify a search firm, or initiate the request for proposal process that puts out a nationwide solicitation to identify a firm. And that firm then goes out and does the work of identifying adequate candidates that meet our requirements. The timeline for that search and the timeline for the date of hire have not been determined. And it's the determination of the board that that hire date is July 1/26, January 1/27, July 1/27. That is, will be, will be part of the firm-to-district contract. That timeline will be established between the five board members and the firm, once that firm has been identified. So if we move forward with the RFP process, even if we put it out tomorrow, we still will not be awarding a firm likely, super quick would be December 16th, most likely would be the, the January meeting on the 20th, I believe. That would be just to hire the firm, then the search process will begin. If our timeline was dictated to that firm, and this is at the behest of the board, that we want to hire on July 1 of '27, that gives that firm more time. If we want to hire in July 1/26, it gives them less time, but we're still within that window. No timelines have been determined. That is to be determined by the five members on the dais. Okay, so I don't want there to be any misconception that if we vote, if you guys vote to move forward with any of these processes, that that means that Dr. Patton's out no matter what, July 1 of '26. None of that's been decided. This is only to move forward with the process. The only reason that this has been siloed off, and that I don't receive direct direction from Dr. Patton or CFO, is because we currently are without a CFO. And this directly impacts her job, which is why I could not go to her and ask for permission to put this out. It has to be presented to the board, because there's an inherent conflict of interest. You can't ask somebody in a position, position to say, hey, we want to put a contract out to replace you. Do you think that's okay? So that's why we're here, asking you guys to vote on whether we're moving forward or not. The timeline as to when that firm begins their search process and what the targeted hire date is, is yet to be determined. That is determined by the five of you at a future date. This is only to decide if we're moving forward with the process or not. I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I'm going to briefly summarize what I already said at the workshop. I think I agree that an RFP is the correct process. In the past, we have gone directly with the Florida School Board Association for several searches. So as a board, I don't even know what other options are out there. And I think that it's important to, for us to know that before we spend approximately $50,000 on a search firm. And I think the RFP process is the most transparent, more than an RFI with, so I support the RFP process. I also concur with my colleague, Mr. Vu, that I think it is critically important to have a transition period, that whoever we hire has an opportunity to come to our district for a week or two weeks at a time, a couple of times, preferably during the school year, because typically, when we do the transition over the summer, that's very challenging. So I think that, you know, whether we go with Mr. Vu's prospective timeline of January 27 or July 27, either way, there is time to do a transition during the school year. And I think that having a real transition period would set our district up for success in a way that we haven't had in the past. And, you know, briefly, I know that Dr. Patton has made some, a lot of substantial changes, and that that's been hard on staff. And she and I have had some discussions on how to alleviate some of the burden on staff, and we don't always see eye to eye on that. But I did ask her to direct Ms. Terry to pull some data on separations from service. And I wanted to compare July 1 to the end of October last year to this year. So last year, that was before Dr. Patton arrived compared to this year. Separations in service by ESPs are down 27%. Separations of service for instructional staff are down 18%. So we are actually having a reduction in staff attrition since Dr. Patton. That's just the data. And I am a data person. So, you know, we, we definitely get emails, and I hear them, and I, I act on them. But those emails are not always representative of the district as a whole. But even still, I do, I do think that we need to work to reduce the burden on teachers. I think it's important to make changes. We have a longstanding achievement gap, and the fact that we're down to 3SI schools speaks to Dr. Patton's hard work on that last year. But, and that work needs to continue. But we need to implement things in a way where teachers feel supported and appreciated and not overwhelmed. So, but the, the data speaks to a reduction in attrition. And that is all I have to say. So I don't see any other lights. So the motion on the table is to go with the RFP process. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And moving on to our ACEA updates. Thank you for waiting, Ms. Ward. I know it's been a long meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell, and board members, and Superintendent Patton. I want to sincerely thank everybody who was involved in ratifying our agreement, especially, of course, the union members and the bargaining unit of employees that showed up and did their civic duty of ratifying their agreement. And I thank all of you for voting for that as well. I would like to think of this as a beginning of a really respectful partnership with the district and the employees. And I want to see some things happen. So I definitely want to see resources restored. Brain pop is missing. And it was a vital, fun, engaging resource for, for teachers to provide for their students. That has been mentioned over and over. I hear from teachers all the time. I excel. If it has been brought back, I have not been informed, but I have brought that to the Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Terry. And there are many resources that are being depleted. For example, teachers have problems making copies. They shouldn't. We have plenty of money for resources and supply money. And so there, there have been a lot of issues at the beginning of this year that have made it difficult for educators to do their job. And I expect that to change. I do. And I, and I'm, and I'm very hopeful. One thing that keeps coming to my attention is safety. Student safety, teacher safety, education support professionals, safety. I'm talking about bus drivers, bus aides, paraprofessionals. Violence has no place in our public school system. And I know all of you agree with that. But we must enforce our code of conduct. We must continue to expect no violence in classrooms, no violence in our schools or on our buses. And we have a lot of violence. Violence against adults, violence against other children. And it needs to be, it needs to be addressed in a severe and radical way. With safety, I want to mention too, that I am going to resubmit to you our legal advisement that we- that we submitted in February about the problems with the ICE policy in this district. There are a lot of community members here. Our policy does not reflect our community's values. And so we need to do better with our ICE policy. I, I believe I submitted the Lee County example. There are a lot more conservative districts in this state that are doing much better than we are in just saying there needs to be a judicial warrant for someone to obtain a child. And so I will be resubmitting the legal advisement the FEA Legal Department submitted to Mr. Spilius in February that was ignored. And I just want to make sure that we reconsider that because it is vitally important to our community. And I do want to say, I expect that we also will support and have a safe learning environment for all of our LGBTQ plus students. And it will be a safe LGBTQ plus environment for employees to work because we do have Title VII rights. Those are federal rights. And I think many people from Talbot spoke up today about what has been done in this district to us by the Attorney General, by the Commissioner of Education, unwarranted, no due process, treating people like they are guilty of something when they've done nothing wrong. And I absolutely know that the union will have their backs because we are the majority and we are defending legally our members, any member that is eligible for legal services, and there are a lot of them that are currently with union lawyers and being defended. And so we will continue to do that. We will continue to fight for justice and fight for fairness and fight for the employees. So that is most of what I had to say. I agree with Ms. Surtin about the problems with siphoning off funds from the public school system through the PEP, through the Goals of Hope. And I just wanted to say that on November 12th, FEA is going to have a statewide town hall meeting, November 18th, which is the next school board meeting. We will have a day of action. So I would like everyone to stay tuned for that, and I will continue to be here for our ACA updates. It's been a long meeting. Thank you all. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, and I wanted to just clarify with you the date of our next board meeting. So our November meeting is the reorganization meeting, and we are having that on the 19th of right before the workshop. So we'll have the reorganization at 10:00 a.m. and then the workshop immediately following. So I wanted to make sure you were aware.
November 18th is not a board meeting?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the update. Thanks.
Are there any board member announcements? Well, I, I have a few, if no one else does. I had the pleasure of meeting with Kristin Mao, our AAC, our ACCPTA, Alachua County Council of PTAs president, and we had a great meeting where she was able to convey some of the broad concerns of parents and teachers in our district. And I was able to ask her to get more of that kind of information. It was a wonderful meeting. I also wanted to congratulate my colleague, Ms. Surtin. She was inducted as a lifetime member of the NAACP at their banquet, which most of us attended, Dr. Patton, Dr. McNeely, myself, Mr. Vu, and Ms. Surtin. And that was a wonderful event. I also, since based on board consensus, we're moving away from doing proclamations, I wanted to recognize that September 15th to October 15th was Hispanic Heritage Month. And we have many Hispanic students in our district, and I hope that they had the opportunity to learn about some of the contributions of their community to our wonderful country. Similarly, October was LGBTQ History Month, and it culminated with a pride celebration this weekend that I attended with my family, and we had a wonderful time. And this month, November, is Native American History Month. So our students who learn history learn about the contributions of all different types of American citizens, and that is a wonderful thing because our country would not be what it is without the contributions of everyone. And I see your light, Mr. Vu.
I'll try to keep them pretty brief. You know, since the last meeting, I, you know, one of the things I want to talk about is I attended the Peaceful Past March. That was in downtown Gainesville. And if you all don't know about this organization, they do a lot to help women and kids in abusive situations, just basically start again, house them. I donated. If you have the means to do so, I highly encourage you all to please donate to this organization. They do work that is just utterly invaluable that without so many people would be without. So please go look into that. Also, I also attended the NAACP Gala, and it was also really great to see that, you know, it was a bipartisan affair. We saw Chuck Lemmons, too, there. We saw Brian Kramer there as well, just, you know, offering their support as well, which was really great to see. Attending the Arcane Year Gala and then seeing just all the work they do for our students in the community and the students in this community with high needs and even into adulthood. Again, if you have not, please donate to this organization as well if you have the means. I highly encourage that. I also attended the Pride Celebration this past weekend, and it was really great to see just the supportive community we have here in Gainesville. And so I'll just keep with that.
Are there any board member requests or superintendent requests? Mr. Vu?
So I do want to go back to something Citizen Gilfillan said about, you know, it is in our policy to do a superintendent evaluation, and it doesn't say, you know, what the timeframe necessarily is, something that's yearly, right? It doesn't offer that. And so I really do think in this upcoming organization meeting and workshop, we really should discuss as a board, what is that timeframe and what do we actually value in a superintendent in terms of the evaluation? You know, our teachers are evaluated, our staff's evaluated, our students are evaluated. We definitely should evaluate, you know, the one employee we oversee as well, you know, aside from our board attorney. I also would love to start a process to where we rewrite Policy 1040 to actually give us a distinct timeframe. And I think because we don't have a timeframe set in policy, oftentimes this does fall to the wayside. And even just looking at past board discussions to where there were board members and boards that just even, didn't even want to do an evaluation. But again, it's required regardless of whether or not we deem somebody to be temporary or long-term or interim. And then just something that we've talked about a lot is that, you know, I, I often talk about, you never get everything you want, right? You should be happy with 80% because you really truly cannot get everything you want in life, right? And so when I think about now, what's something that I still feel like I'm missing to really be happy with where we are in a district? And it really is that quality of life for teachers, just echoing things my colleagues have said as well, echoing things that teachers have come up and said to us. It's just now, how do we start alleviating that? We've done a lot to move in a really great direction, aligning the arrows, making sure we are one district instead of just dozens of schools doing their own thing inefficiently. And so that's just the next thing that I would really like to see start happening, and I'm going to be harping on this until the end of time. But our 236-day employees, they really, really lost a lot when we voted on that last allocation. And I would just like to see us get to a place to where we could give some of that back, even if it's just instead of giving them 14 vacation days to spend, we let them accrue half a day every month. I know that will come up again to us in April or May, but I would love to start those discussions sooner rather than later. And that's all.
Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. Since Mr. Vu mentioned the superintendent's evaluation, yes, we need to have a discussion about that. However, our strategic plan that's still not intact is where we look at the goals and objectives in order to even look at what the superintendent has accomplished or what still needs to be done or what references that we have. That's what we've been using before with our other superintendents, some of them. And I think that that's important to get that completed inasmuch that if we are going to evaluate this current wonderful Dr. Patton, then the strategic plan needs to be completed in order for us to look back unless we are going to pad it so based on what has been accomplished. So we are a little behind with that, and I have to agree with him that the discussion should come at the next workshop, which probably will not happen until the 19th. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, and I'm going to concur with both of you that we need to have, even if it's a temporary strategic plan while we work on building it out, we need to have something that's guiding our district, and we need to work on the superintendent evaluation. So hopefully those will be on our next workshop. Is there anything else?
Yes.
Dr. Patton?
So just wanted to say a couple of pretty neat events that I was able to attend. The Cade Prize Museum, at the Cade Workshop, sorry, the Cade Museum, that had the entrepreneurs that were from all over, but we had some of our students there that were part of the process, part of the judging. So they were really, really just highly regarded by all of the real business folks that are right in the middle of entrepreneurship. It was really great. The district's PTA, the ACEA, had a lovely opportunity to jump on and be part of their virtual meeting, so it was good to talk with all them. Made quite a few parents. Enjoyed, like many of you mentioned, the NAACP, the Freedom event, annual event that was really wonderful. And thank you, Dr. McNeely, who had asked for two years to see if the school district could bring greetings. That's how we were able to bring greetings that night. So thank you for persisting on that for two years. It's always a joy to represent the school system. And then you saw the magnet showcase. It is one thing to talk magnets. It's another to be in the room where they're all at, the kids, the teachers, the principals, the parents, and to run into quite a few parents that were there not for next year. They're already planning for two years from now, so they wanted to come and see. So that, I know it's only the second annual event, but Mrs. Neal and our crew, they just did a great job. Shannon and everybody and Diana Rollo, just really a proud day for our schools, no question to that. And then also, thank you for many of you, and then along with the Chair speaking at the delegation. That was, that was good, too, for us to get ahead of it. The chamber had one earlier, so I was able to speak at that group also. So thank you for putting your platform together like a month ago so that we could have what we wanted to talk about. And then also, I attended the Black 100 Women's Chartering Event that we had. I knew nine of the 83, 83 people, so a lot of our school system people. So I also wanted to say, Dr. McNeely, congratulations being on that. And just, it's, it's a inaugural event, so it's a kickoff for that. So anyway, just thank you for everybody, and thanks again for all that everybody does.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Is there anything else? Then this meeting is adjourned at 9:59 p.m.